Call this meeting to order if everyone could please stand and join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Madsen.
Here.
Trustee Scalise.
Here.
Trustee Galuza.
Here.
Trustee Reiser.
Here.
Trustee Christopherson.
Here.
Trustee Wilson.
Here.
Mayor Baldwin.
Here. All right, first up is a proclamation. We talked about this for many, many years. Here in this community, we are supporters of our constitution, which includes our Second Amendment. But what we ask of all of our gun owners is that they act in a responsible way. This proclamation is for SMART Week 2025. And some of the highlights, it talks about New Lennox is committed to creating a safe environment, contributing to the safety and well-being of our children. And almost every single day, a child gets their hands on their gun unintentionally and kills or wounds themselves or someone else in the United States. The steps that we take as gun owners to make sure kids can't access guns when they shouldn't and put themselves in danger are incredibly important. When guns aren't properly stored, tragedy can strike, whether it's a child finding a firearm and wounding or killing themselves or someone else, or someone stealing it, using it to commit crimes. So protecting public safety in the communities that we serve is our highest responsibility. Schools, hospitals, state agencies, and community organizations are committed to their crucial role in reducing injuries and deaths by promoting secure gun storage and safety. A SMART Week raises awareness and promotes the efforts to educate the public about secure gun storage. And we commend SMART for doing their part, for recognizing that being a gun owner is a right that you have, but you also have an obligation and a responsibility to do that in a safe manner, to make sure that we're protecting most vulnerable people in our communities. So at this time, I'd like to ask you to step forward and receive this proclamation.
You've got to start, should I?
Thank you very much. We appreciate you. Okay, next up, we have the public hearings for Special Service Area Number 37 for Lakes Park Subdivision, Special Service Area 38 Lakes Park Townhomes, Special Service Area 39 Tyrrelling Lakes Phase 1, and Special Service Area Number 40 Tyrrelling Lakes Amenities Center. Madam Clerk, do we have proof of notice on these public hearings? All four public hearings?
I do.
All right. Robyn, you want to take the first two and then... Or is there anyone here that's here to speak on these tonight? No one at all? Okay. Anything you need to discuss?
No, probably need a motion to open and...
Yeah.
But these, the...
Go ahead.
In July...
Go ahead.
At the July 28th meeting, the board adopted the ordinances proposing these special service areas for Lakes Park. The first encompasses the entire subdivision, and the second, it pertains only to the town homes for the parking spaces that are within the right-of-way. It allows for a rate cap up to $1.50 per hundred dollars of assessed valuation. Following the public hearing, there is a 60-day waiting period, so the ordinance establishing the SSAs would not be brought before you until the October 27th meeting.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board? No? Okay, at this time then we'll close the public hearing. Public hearings. Next up is our consent agenda, which consists of 10 items. They are the minutes of the regular meeting for July 28th, 2025, ordinance disconnecting property, 1369 North Cedar Road, second read; ordinance implementing municipal grocery retailers occupation tax, municipal grocery service occupation tax, second read; ordinance amending Chapter 82, Article 6, Home Rule of the Village Code; ordinance authorizing the disposal of surplus property and authorizing a letter of agreement with the village of Markham to purchase said surplus property, public works vehicles and equipment; approval of 2025 Parkway Tree Program; and proclamations for National Payroll Week, National ovarian cancer awareness month, National Suicide Prevention Month, and National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Is any member wishing those items to be pulled and discussed separately? All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Madsen, second by Trustee Scalise. Any comments or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Christopherson.
Aye.
Trustee Madsen.
Aye.
Trustee Galuza.
Aye, abstained from A.
Trustee Scalise.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye, abstained from A.
Mayor Baldwin.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next up on our order of business is consideration for approval for a county's special use, Spencer Road Solar, Solar East and West LLC Northeast Corner of Spencer Road and CN Railroad. Rob?
Yes, so this county's special use request for a commercial solar energy facility is on 110-acre parcel. The solar facilities would occupy about 30 acres of the overall site. There is a large amount of floodplain and even some floodway on this property, but the layout of the solar facility would work around those, so they would not be encroaching into any of the floodplain. It's separated into two separate facilities, but they would share an access drive off of Spencer Road. Just a couple of close-ups of this. One of staff's comments is that any part of the roadway that is in the right-of-way be asphalt or concrete, as opposed to gravel, which is what they are proposing for the rest of it. They are proposing a not-farm fence, which we did not object to on the other parcel that was a commercial solar energy proposal adjacent to the Spencer Road water tanks. And then they are also, even though it's not something for you to review, they are requesting two variances from the county regarding the minimum number of mowings and the maximum height of natural vegetation, so that they can comply with the state natural resources, pollinator plantings. Because of the amount of floodplain, our comprehensive plan recommends parks and open space for the site. The use of the solar facility would not interfere with that future implementation. Additionally, we have no utilities to the site. One of the other recommended conditions that staff was asking the county to consider is requiring a berm and a sidewalk along Spencer Road. The petitioner contacted me today to point out that there is a 50-foot Nycor easement that runs along Spencer Road, so that would be problematic in putting a sidewalk, and at this point, the sidewalk doesn't lead to anywhere, so, you know, one option could be to have them contribute funds towards a future sidewalk if we felt that that was something that we wanted to put on this property or deal with it in the future when the property is developed for another use. And then the other recommended condition that staff had was to install a berm and landscaping along Spencer Road, again, given the gas pipeline that does pose problems. And if you can see the green line, that is what the petitioner is proposing, to install basically a row of mix of evergreens, trees, and shrubs. But because of all those reasons, this is one where staff is recommending that we not file an objection or not object to the county's special use. Plan Commission concurred with that recommendation last week. And I know there are representatives here if the board has any questions.
Okay, and I think that's important, not only for the board, obviously understands, but for the community. There are so many requests for solar in Will County, and there are ones that we have objected to and successfully had the county concur with our objection, ones that will impact residential, ones that could impact additional development and growth. But again, in this particular area, there's nothing there that will be negatively impacted. We can't bring utilities to it. So again, it's not that we're anti-solar, it's that we are opposed to solar in particular places, and this is one where I agree with staff and Plan Commission. Does the petitioner wish to speak on this? No? Questions or comments from the board? Anything? Okay. All right, so is there a motion to not file an objection with the county, however, to stipulate Robyn's comments that she made, that she would bring them forward to the county as well?
So moved with those stipulations.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Scalise, second by Trustee Christopherson. Any comments or questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Reiser.
Aye.
Trustee Madsen.
Aye.
Trustee Galuza.
Aye.
Trustee Scalise.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Christopherson.
Aye.
Mayor Baldwin.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, the next two items are consideration of an ordinance authorizing a development agreement Cherry Hill Lareway LLC, southwest corner of Lareway Road and Gauger Road Extended, first read, and consideration ordinance rezoning property Cherry Hill Lareway LLC, southwest corner of Lareway Road and Gauger Road Extended, first read. Robyn?
Yes, so these requests pertain to about a 65-acre parcel along the south side of Lareway Road, would be just west of where Gauger Road currently terminates at Lareway Road. It is immediately east of our water resource recovery facility that is under construction. Back in the early 2000s, this property was part of an annexation and a potential residential development, so the majority of the property is owned R3. The corner, about four and a half acres or 4.75 acres, was zoned C2. And then on the east side of the Gauger Road extension, which is not part of this request, is R2A, single-family zoning, as well as commercial on the corner. They are requesting to rezone it to the I-1 Limited Industrial District for the continuation of the Cherry Hill Business Park. There are a whole lot of different zoning classifications in this area of the village, as you can see, but Gauger Road has become the border and the village board has stuck with that between commercial or industrial and residential uses. When we did have industrial proposals along the east side of Gauger Road, the board was very firm with that being on the west side. In this case, even though our wastewater treatment plant under construction is owned R1, it is arguably not a residential use, so to have this property zoned I-1 would just kind of continue that north-south corridor along the west side of Gauger Road as an industrial corridor. The comprehensive plan does recommend residential and consideration for the existing zoning. There, the property on the west side of the water resource recovery facility was also recommended for residential development, but in 2023, the village did rezone that to industrial as well. So there is precedent for deviating from the comprehensive plan in this area. This is an exhibit that they had to the development agreement where it showed potential or the proposed right-of-way dedications. Because Lareway Road is under Will County's jurisdiction, staff doesn't feel that this is necessary to attach to the annexation or to the development agreement. Now, with respect to the development agreement, it does mimic a lot of the zoning deviations and other subdivision code and village code deviations that would make it consistent with the rest of the Cherry Hill Business Park. They did submit a potential concept plan, but no applications have been filed, and this is just for illustrative purposes. The annexation or the development agreement talks about Gauger Road being constructed for a distance of 400 feet south of Lareway. Until we get a development plan, staff feels that that language should be a little more open-ended to ensure that there is proper access for whatever development ultimately does go here. Staff is also recommending that they dedicate right-of-way along their entire frontage for the future extension of Gauger Road if and when the property to the east develops and might require the road to be extended a little bit further south. The development agreement does request reduced setbacks along Lareway Road and Gauger Road. We have not, the village has not granted that for other business or Cherry Hill Business Park properties, with the exception of the ones where they were adjacent to Joliet. So in this case, the ones that we annexed two years ago did not receive any relief at Cherry Hill and Lareway, so staff feels that the 50-foot setback should be maintained along Lareway Road and Gauger Road. Additionally, there is a provision in the other annexation agreements where the Cherry Hill Business Park is across from Jacobs Field Subdivision that required a four-to-eight-foot tall berm. Staff is recommending that we require that along the entire east property line of this property as well, to provide a good buffer for the property to the east when it does get developed residentially. Other than that, it's...
Okay.
I'm just here to answer any questions, and I know representatives are here from Northern Builders. When this was before the Plan Commission for public hearing last week, there was a split vote. They did ultimately recommend approval of it, and I know that there are some residents here who were in attendance at that meeting as well.
Okay, all right, very good. Just petitioner wish to come up and speak?
Good evening, Mayor and Trustees. Mathias Tresna on behalf of Northern Builders.
Good evening, Matthew Krasak, President of Northern Builders.
Appreciate you guys having us. We've been dealing with staff roughly for six months on this property. You know, Northern Builders is a 98-year-old family-owned business. We've actually been developing Cherry Hill Business Park for the last 25 years. Time has certainly flown. You know, people always ask us, you know, what does Northern Builders do really well? And I'd say it's our keen attention to detail when it comes to developing these marquee, aesthetically pleasing industrial facilities. And probably a week goes by where we don't have somebody coming up to us saying, "You guys did such a great job with Carlo Corporate Center with Cherry Hill Business Park, and we're looking to carry those standards over, obviously, to this parcel." You know, whether it be landscaping, facades, downlit lights to help mitigate any concern for light pollution, we feel like it's our duty to go the extra step because we feel that it attracts and resonates with the community, with businesses, and the employees as well. As such, we've been very successful in bringing countless jobs and tax revenue to both Joliet and New Lennox over the years. This parcel, obviously, is 130 acres. Originally, when we looked at it and dealing with staff, it was recommended, as Robyn mentioned, to keep the prospective development within the boundaries west of Gauger Road and east of Cherry Hill Road, which is consistent with the adjacent developments and everything we've done north. Most recently, we did have success bringing Unilever to the business park and 1.2 million square foot facility at Barron's and Gauger Road. That is our thought process as well. It's, well, the site plan is certainly flexible. We're keeping our options open based on market demand in terms of what product we're going to be developing in the near future. We are also working with WillDOT at the moment. We had a meeting with them last week. They're going to be constructing the road winding work to Lareway here in the near future, as well as the overpass at Gauger Road. You know, I know concerns were voiced at Plan Commission regarding traffic, so that work will certainly help alleviate any traffic concerns at peak hours. We also, coming out of that meeting last week, we also engaged a traffic engineer, and based on the R3 zoning right now, they did a quick comparison with how that relates to I-1 zoning for industrial, and the findings were that the I-1 zoning would actually generate 30% to 50% less traffic at peak hours than the R3 zoning. So the numbers kind of speak for themselves on the traffic counts. But overall, we think this is the highest and best use for the property, and it provides a great buffer between the east residential areas, as well as the water treatment facility. I know that's a huge concern and something that we've been working closely with the village on to help mitigate, but overall, we feel this is the highest and best use for the vacant land that's been, you know, really trying to get something going for a long time, and we were actually approached by the farmer to purchase it, and we'd love to see it get developed here. Open any questions you guys may have tonight?
All right, well, I'll start. First of all, the business park, which has been in existence, as you said, for 25 years, you do quality work, obviously. It is aesthetically pleasing, that's not the issue. Obviously, we do business with Northern, it's, we're glad to have you as a partner in our community. We did say that we did not want any type of I-1 growth east of Gauger. There's a couple, here's a couple of things. So you talk about the traffic study, and I'm sure that information is accurate. This, we have stuck to our position of keeping I-1 west of Gauger, and we've had a number of opportunities, people who've wanted to develop east of Gauger in between Haven and Spencer, and we've shut that down. We have not allowed that whatsoever. It's not, I don't think the concern, and I travel Gauger every single day, I live off Gauger, so I travel Gauger every single day. It's not the amount of traffic, it's that there are so many trucks, and our neighbors to the west will put up industrial anywhere. There are so many trucks. And so the concern, I think, is a couple-fold, and we are going to give the people in here an opportunity to speak. Number one, we already see trucks down Gauger, which we expect. I-80 is there at Route 30, and there is the business park there to the west. That's to be expected. I know that we're moved, the county is moving forward after years, they're finally moving forward to put the overpass in now, which is good, that we'll have that over the train tracks there, which will help when trains come and backing things up. And I know you don't have an actual concept for this site, as you stated. You put a placeholder here, but it could be a couple of smaller buildings, to Robyn's point about where that access goes and whatnot. And for the points, she and I discussed this, for the points that she brought up about the 50-foot setback, side setback, not the 30, the berming and the trees, absolutely, and not limiting the Gauger improvement to the south to 400 feet, just waiting to see what type of site plan is actually presented and approved. I concur with all of that, that's my opinion. I concur with all of that. But you're going to hear from the residents, some of whom I'm sure you heard from at Plan Commission, and their concerns are about trucks. And, I mean, there's no disputing, we need trucks. People complain about trucks, but then they're on Amazon three times a day. I mean, we need trucks, we need rail, but Gauger Road is a two-lane road, and that's a major concern by adding additional truck traffic. The other thing that you may or may not hear is that parcel east of Gauger, which this, as long as I'm here, and I'm sure with this board, because we have stuck to not allowing any industrial go east of Gauger, the question's going to be, who's going to want to develop that piece if you have... You are a nice, although we're happy, we moved, because originally, the wastewater treatment plant was going to be east of Gauger, and at the parent, at the resident's request, we moved it over a couple parcels further away. So we own, for those of you out here, I'm sure many of you know, the bottom half on the right, we own that, that's wetlands, we own that, and that little square that's out there, we own that as well. So there isn't that whole 80 acres on the east side of Gauger that's left. All that's left is that little L-sh, upside-down L-shaped piece. But if I lived in the neighborhood, despite what we have, the fact that we have stuck to our guns and said we're not letting anything go there, my concern would be, okay, this comes now, if nobody wants to build residential, what happens then with that piece? Does that ultimately become an industrial piece? For us, as we sit up there, here, that's a nonstarter, and the board hasn't even seen industrial that's been proposed for east of Gauger, because we tell them it's a nonstarter, don't come here. But I can see where residents would be concerned. Yes, it's nice that you're providing a buffer from the wastewater treatment plant, although it is new and it's not going to be an issue, it's hidden and everything else, it is a nice buffer, but what happens with that remainder piece, which does then abut to residential and is directly across the street from residential? So I think, now, those are not answers that you can give, that's only answers that the board can give, but I'm sure that that weighs on the minds of people. That's one thing to be west of Gauger, but is it going to creep to the east side of Gauger? So you, please feel free to address any of that, and then I'll ask the board if they want to add anything.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
We've given a lot of thought to those questions also, and, you know, one of the questions we asked ourselves is, would a future development prefer to be up against a Class A industrial building or prefer to be up against wastewater treatment plant? So I can't say, I mean, maybe subjectively I could, but, you know, which is better? But I can say that certainly we're respecting that Gauger Road boundary. We didn't even ask anyone on staff if we could go east of Gauger. We knew that would be a nonstarter, so we wanted to respect what that boundary that's already in place with the business park staying west of Gauger. And as far as future development of that remaining roughly 65-acre parcel, I think it's difficult to say. We're not going to pursue it, nor would New Lennox consider it. I suspect that piece may sit undeveloped for some time. The property that we're purchasing has been on the market for years, and, which is why our offer was only for roughly 50% of that. So I don't know if that offers a little insight, but again, we've been asking those same questions.
And I know, again, it's difficult because you're not sure exactly what the site plan is, it's all going to depend on who wants to build and what they want to build and what will fit on that piece. But I mean, if you're talking about, you've got a placeholder there of 900,000 square feet roughly, I mean, what does, what does that look like truck traffic-wise? You're obviously very familiar with those size buildings and, you know, I mean, what are we looking at there?
Yeah, I think that'll develop, once we figure out what type of product we're going to be putting up, you know, different sized buildings, whether it be single loaders or cross docks, develop different traffic counts. What we do know is that the peak hours is really what we're focusing on, based on what we heard last week. You know, we wanted to make sure that we understood what the differences are between the R3 zoning and the industrial zoning. Additionally, you know, the thing with industrial traffic is that it's more evenly spread throughout the day versus peak hours, and I think that's an important facet of the development cycle to realize, is that it's not just, you know, where you've got the residential focus on peak hours to from work back home, you know, it's really spread throughout the day, and we see that at Cherry Hill Business Park. I mean, we do get commended on the fact that it is a quiet business park, and that's what really attracts a lot of the businesses to go there.
Now, I, I mean, I can't speak to it, obviously, I run a school just right across street from the Cherry Hill Business Park, and it doesn't interfere with what we're doing. But access to Lareway, which will of course be four lanes, multiple lanes out there, access is where for trucks on Lareway Road? Is there frontage there that... I know it all depends, again, on what's proposed, but...
Right, right. I mean, based on this preliminary plan, we would modify the traffic signal that's existing at Gauger and Lareway to allow for trucks to cross the street there, but this plan shows a secondary curb cut a little bit to the west.
To the west, so it's further away?
Yeah, closer to the treatment plant.
It's over 1,000 feet.
Over 1,000?
Over 1,000 feet, yep. And the, we had a call with the developer across the street, Division Street Partners, and spoke with them, and our curb cuts would almost align identically. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, questions or comments from the board?
I have a few questions.
Sure.
I do work in logistics, I work in warehouse, I work in transportation. I had a few questions, most, some of which the mayor's already voiced, I'm not going to repeat those, but in the notes, I saw that you were looking at cold storage facilities. Is that still something you're considering, and what sound reduction noises are you putting in if you were to do that?
What was that last part?
Cold storage facilities, are any of these going to be cold storage facilities? Or is the big one going to be a cold storage facility?
As part of the development agreement, we left the flexibility to accommodate a cold storage user. We just did a project for Agile Cold Storage on Spencer We just did a project for Agile Cold Storage on Spencer Road. So we're seeing a little bit more of demand on that front right now, which is why we just, again, left ourselves open in the development agreement, to be able to accommodate those types of users.
So would there be additional noise cancellation, something put in to reduce the noise from those facilities, because those produce a hum as well?
Noise cancellation?
Yeah, yeah, all of the, like, I'll use Agile, that's probably the best example.
Mayor, sorry, could you just step up and talk?
Yeah, Agile's a good example. That building has these large screen penthouse areas, which actually, not only are they screened for visibility, but also for sound.
Okay.
Yeah. But, going back to your original question, there are no plans for a cold storage facility. It's, this is really a placeholder, and I guess it really depends on demand.
And is it saying 178 and 92 stalls? Is that trailer stalls?
As it's shown right now, correct.
All right. So with 100 dock doors and over 200 stalls, you're looking at 50 to 150-plus trucks every day going in and out of that facility?
Per this plan, yes.
Yeah. And that's my main concern, is Laraway may have been extended, and can handle this, Gauver cannot handle that volume, and that's the only way they can get to 80. With the high school there and everything else going on, my main concern is how we're going to correctly, safely get those trucks in and out. I agree, I work in logistics, I know trucks are needed for community move, but, based on how Gauver is currently designed, I'm worried of the safety of the community and the noise, the noise issues that could arise from that many trucks in addition, added into it, going down that road. I guess I'll leave that.
How, what's, how many do you have at Unilever? How many dock?
Significantly more than what's shown here.
One of the things with the county, the county is actually in the, working to get the right-of-way on Gauver Road, to not only go to truck traffic in two lanes both ways with middle, in points of middle turn lane, but also the ramp. If they get it, I'm talking to the county engineer, they would, they would go forward with the widening next year. As soon as they can get the widening, get the acquisition for the property, they're already planning to move forward, they have the funding in hand.
For Gauver.
For Gauver.
So, what's their ultimate design because of the overpass that's going there?
And also on Laraway, they're getting, they're in the same situation. They have the funding that's queued up, but they're looking for land acquisition, so both widening for both roads are in the queue for both Laraway and Gauver. It's just, they're at the point, they're already at an acquisition phase, which would, is the last thing holding them up for construction.
Right, and I know, and I know that is finally moving forward, but what's the, what's their ultimate design for Gauver north of Laraway, with the overpass?
Gauver's, it was a five-lane cross-section, it is middle barrier, medium barrier, and the, it has turn lanes at access points, but it, but it has, it's a five-lane cross-section with two lanes in either direction, with a middle turn at different.
Going down Gauver north from there?
Correct. With, and through the overpass, even the overpass has a barrier median going over the overpass.
Okay. My only concern with that is that both of these projects that we're talking about, the Gauver project, as well as this project, are in the queue. And we don't know when either one of them may happen. We don't know exactly what this one's going to look like yet. And my concern is that if, you know, obviously, this one's probably maximizing the space, and it's probably the, you know, worst-case scenario in terms of the amount of docks, stalls, that sort of thing. But, if there's that many, and we don't have Gauver widened at that point, you know, we've got an issue there.
We actually, we did meet with the county last week, we actually, they told us they're ready to go. They're, it's at a point of land acquisition, if there's a stumble with that, that's not always the easiest thing to do, but we've met with the head engineer for Will County Transportation.
And they have the funding to move forward.
They have the funding for both, and they're looking for acquisition. So both are ready to go, once the acquisition is complete.
Well, but to your point, and I know you don't have any users or anything like that.
No.
So, you've met with the county as well, you said?
Correct.
We did, this, I'm glad Kirk brought up the Gauver widening and improvements, because as, we participated in that meeting last week, because we're being asked to provide some of our land for that project as well.
Well, let me ask you something, since you met, Kirk's optimistic they're moving forward, I know that they have the funding to move forward, they just do have that land acquisition, and you don't have any immediate plans for this.
None.
Do you see an issue on your part, where you, if this, if this is approved by the board, that it's tied into the construction of the widening of Gauver Road?
Well, so right now, I think the earliest it would be delivered, this project, if we went right away, would be 2027. And it's likely it would go probably into 2028.
And I don't know how long, if they're moving forward, I don't know what the timeline is for the construction of Gauver Road and the overpass.
That was my question, what, have you been given a timeframe from the county?
Yeah, that, I don't know the full time for the, for the build-out. Obviously, you see, we see it already with the widening, it's taken a couple of years for build-out of just the area that they're under widening now.
Right.
But, that, it would probably take them at least a couple of years to build out, build out once they started.
Right, and we're still in the land acquisition phase for that, so that, that could extend as well.
They do own, they do own large chunks of it, on both Gauver and Laraway, they're, one of the reasons for our meeting last week was to, there was points that, working with Northern, and working with some of the other, to move it, they've already, on Gauver Road, for example, they, which was a major undertaking, they've already moved the high-wire lines on that. That was going to be one of the bigger hurdles to go through. We were working with the county to try and facilitate, Nycor has a station there that has to be moved. So we were, so they've been working with Nycor to move that out of the way. So, they've been very aggressive, both on Laraway and on, and Gauver Road, to move them both forward. So, now, acquisition isn't always easy.
Sure.
That could take some time, understood, but most of the parcels are in hand, and that they've moved on utility work, leads me to believe that there, this is something that could, if they get the right-of-way, I was told directly by the county engineer, they're set to go next year.
Yeah, they're looking to move. But that's why I'm asking, if you don't have any concrete plans, not that we would expect you to sit on it forever.
Right.
But, is that something you'd be open to, to tie it to either the widening of Gauver Road, or a specific time out?
Yeah, I think that, I think that the one consideration we need to think about is the timing required of us to perform and proceed with this land acquisition.
Sure.
So, I'd say, as long as we have the entitlements that allow us to proceed with acquiring the property, and we know what we can and cannot do, I think that makes a world of difference, and gives us the confidence to close. Another thought on timing, too, you know, as we said earlier, we have no immediate plans to develop this unless a user came to us specifically looking for this building. Again, this will be a placeholder for any number of things in which we wish to do. But, I think the bigger question is, you know, why is this, why are we buying this to begin with? And candidly, this is a very defensive move, because we've had other competing developers tie up property within our business park. It was actually the Fritz property, 100 acres that we're building on right now. One of our competing developers had that tied up for a year and a half in our business park, where we've, I bet you, we've invested a half-billion dollars between buildings, roads, utilities, improvements. We really want to keep competitors out of our business park, and maintain the same standards that we have today.
All right, well, I mean, but again, maybe I'll be a little more succinct in my question.
Sure.
Understanding that it's a defensive move, and not because you've got somebody wanting to build this building right now. And I, and I know how hard those are to find someone to just plop up a 900,000 square, just doesn't happen like that. But understanding that, so if, if the board moved forward and granted those entitlements, would you, if we are confident, and it sounds like you were in those meetings, you're confident that the county is going to move forward aggressively on the widening of Gauver Road, do you have an issue tying the occupancy of that, of building on that parcel, to either the completion of the Gauver Road widening, or a date far enough out where, because we can't ask you to do it perpetually in case something does go wrong.
Right.
But a date far enough out where there's no reason why Gauver Road shouldn't be constructed?
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable thing for us to agree to.
Okay, because I think, as you've heard, that that's the concern. If you were able to build this, and Gauver Road isn't widened, that does, now, I know, we already have the business park, and there's plenty of other land where more trucks than this could ever accommodate could come out of, and go right out onto Gauver Road. But, that far south at Laraway, if you'd be willing to tie occupancy to that, you know, to that construction, or to a date far enough out where construction should have been completed, that's something that you would consider as well.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, and I also want to make sure that, because I didn't want to gloss over it, the things that we talked about earlier with the setbacks, and the access point, and the birmingham, are those issues for you? I know they're not in your original plan, but I tend to agree with staff, and I don't want to speak for the board, but I would assume they would agree on all those issues as well.
Yep, we're certainly open to it, yes.
Okay, but I mean, and I appreciate that. And again, you've been a very responsible builder in our community, and we appreciate that, but it's something I think we'd have to be pretty insistent on.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely.
I don't see any deal breakers here.
Including the Gauver Road stuff?
Correct.
Okay, I know we'd have to define exactly what that means before this was approved, but, but, but you understand the concerns that you're hearing here, and, you know, that could go a long way to alleviating some of those concerns.
Yes.
I mean, if people don't want it, they don't want it. But, at least, we do everything we can in our power to kind of protect what we're doing there.
100%.
Okay.
And, you know, when all else fails, I mean, we do, we do want to hear the residents, and we want to be very sensitive and very thoughtful to what's important to them.
Yeah.
We have our jobs to do also, but, but we're very sensitive to that, and we want to do the right thing. So, these five things that we've discussed are all reasonable requests and things that we can work with.
I mean, like I said, that's what we do too, because originally, it made the most sense to put the wastewater treatment plant where we were, because it was right there, but the residents didn't want that, so we moved it out. So, you know, we're here to serve them.
Yeah.
And, any reasonable concerns that the residents have, we have an obligation to try and address. I mean, if the bottom line is, I just don't want it anywhere, well, I, we can't help that.
Sure.
But certainly, there are legitimate concerns that residents have expressed, and that board members have expressed as well. And again, I will reiterate, you run a great business park, spent here 25 years, before I got on the board in 2001, so right before I got on the board, it was, it was opened.
Yeah.
And you do have a nice business park that's successful, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, is there anything else you'd like to add before?
I just have one, one more thought, and, you know, part of this too is a matter of perception, because by developing this parcel, we are creating a physical barrier between the residential and a water treatment plant. So, perhaps some may see that as a positive thing?
It may be, but it's still, I think the concern is still, it's industrial, and it's trucks. And trucks are tough. Gauver Road's brutal. I mean, I come south on Gauver Road at 30, sometimes I'm stuck there for five cycles of the light, then you throw a train in to boot, and it just makes it, because as you know, trucks just can't floor it and get going. So by the time the truck gets going, goes through the light, two trucks get through, and the light turns red, and everybody's sitting there, then you throw a train on top of it, and it's, and it's tough.
Yeah.
And it's tough for a daily commute, and again, we haven't had any circumstances that I'm aware of where an ambulance could get somewhere, or whatever, but that is why we're, we've pushed to have this overpass built. But you can see, before a potential development of this size would be added, and again, it is west of Gauver, I'll grant you that, but before that would be added, I think for the convenience and safety of the residents there, that widening and overpasses is kind of critical. Okay?
Me, Rick.
Any other comments from the board at this time?
I have a comment. My biggest concern that hasn't been brought up yet, is what is this going to do in regards to the safety of Lincoln Way West commuters? You know, I've driven three kids to Lincoln Way West over the past six years, in traffic along that stretch of Gauver in the morning, with the trucks and the train, and trucks just pulling out in front of people, waiting, everyone's waiting for the trains to end. Now having more trucks coming from an opposite direction, adding, and if, like what Jim's saying, if it's going to add 150, 200 trucks a day, how is that going to interfere with schools starting and dismissal times? You know, what are the, the times? I just think, more, in my opinion, having driven that route daily for six years straight with my kids, I think that's going to add a lot of stress to that area.
But that is the point of the widening in the bridge, and that's what we're saying is, well, no, if you're widening it a couple of lanes and adding a bridge, this is minuscule compared to what you have now going up. So without that, and I think that was Jim's point, and that's why I asked the question, without that, just leaving it as it is now, that will cause additional traffic and concerns. But understand that the business park has got how many acres remaining in it, total, would you say? I don't expect you to know off the top of your head, but...
Maybe 300?
Yeah, so I mean, there's another 300 acres that could be developed, so if this doesn't develop, that doesn't mean that there isn't going to be development. Plus, as we know, Joliet puts it up everywhere. And, those trucks do come down, I mean, one of our objections to Laraway Road widening, which we didn't control, was that's just inviting trucks to come down Laraway Road. And because the state in its infinite wisdom didn't approve the Iliana, where people could connect from 55 to 57, these trucks are driving down Laraway. And that's, you know, so, I guess, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't. If you don't widen it, they're going to drive down there anyway. And so the same thing goes here, that's why, for me, if we're going to consider this, tying it to road improvements and that overpass, is what keeps Lincoln Way West safer and more secure. Not tying it to that, or to a reasonable period of time, I think, creates a problem, but it's only a problem in this area. It has nothing to do what happens in the Cherry Hill Business Park. I mean, that could pop up tomorrow.
In phase one of the engineering for the overpass, was actually, one of the publications was held at the high school. And so we got a lot of comment there, but also, the engineers at that time, not adding trucks, that doesn't add concerns, not saying that, but they sat down with the school, and part of their designing, their concerns were part of the ultimate design.
Sure.
Of the overpass, not only the overpass, but the widening as well.
Sure. Okay. Anything else? Okay, if you wouldn't mind just having a seat.
Thank you.
I don't, do you have anyone to sign? I know, nobody has signed up, but if there's somebody that'd like to come up and speak, please step forward, and just state your name for the record.
My name's Ken Holdifer, I'm on 1870 Mays Drive, which is in Jacobs Field. I took some notes, and I am not going to reiterate anything that's already been said, and already the concerns that have been brought up. You know, Northern builders, I feel like definitely have a pre-existing relationship with the, with New Lennox, and I think that that's helping them in this case. They, they mentioned they got a 50% discount on the land, which sounds like it's beneficial to them, so, you know, would another builder want to build on this land without that discount or that pre-existing relationship with New Lennox?
They didn't get the discount from us, we don't have land.
Yeah, okay, no, I know, but I'm just saying, that's, that's probably helps.
It's maybe this private landowner couldn't sell it, and he sold it, and it fires, but that's nothing new.
Yeah, and I'm saying, that's helping them decide this is a good, good area for them.
Sure.
You did mention that there is Cherry Hill, and I, is that New, is that Joliet?
It's half and half.
Half and half, okay. So, you know, you are, you are correct that, you know, there could be additional developments there. So this one, in addition to that, doesn't help the situation at all. No one, you know, a lot of people are bringing up concerns on the board, and, you know, at that past meeting, and this is kind of a naive question, so, what are the benefits of this building to New Lennox? It's tax revenue, I assume, correct?
Not for us, I mean, we get the smallest portion.
Oh, okay.
It goes to schools.
Yeah, okay.
And we get 4%.
Okay.
But typically, all, the schools make up about close to 70% of 60-some percent of your tax bill.
Okay.
It's, I mean, here, it's a couple of things, I guess I would say. Number one, you have a land over, and our, a land... It's, I mean, here, it's a couple of things, I guess I would say. Number one, you have a landowner and a landowner and they have a right to sell their property. So to them, that's a benefit, even if it's at a 50% discount. There is tax revenue to the taxing bodies, you know, that educate kids and provide parks and fire and whatnot. For whatever jobs it creates, it creates jobs.
Yeah.
So yeah, that's, that's basically.
Okay, yeah, so we're benefiting Joliet High School, which is not New Lennox.
It's New Lennox Grade School.
Yeah, okay.
And Joliet High School.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, so.
The weird boundary.
Yeah, no, exactly. So, you know, so as far as all of the concerns that are being brought up, what, what is the benefit and that hasn't been discussed yet tonight, and this, these benefits don't outweigh the risks in my opinion. You know, there's a lot of concerns from, from multiple people here and, you know, I didn't even know about the cold storage building, so I'm glad that was brought up. That agile one that was.
It's right down the pasture.
Yeah, that one's extremely tall too, you know.
Right.
Yeah, and, and a lot of, you know, a lot of people talking about truck traffic, they're also an eyesore. You know, the one that's already across from Jacobs Field, you know, the, the landscape buffer does help.
Hmm.
But if your house backs that, I, it's still very obvious there's a large building there and, and you know, the landscaping does help, but it's not, it doesn't cover up the building, it doesn't hide it. The wastewater treatment plant, you know, I was at a couple of the meetings
Sure.
when you guys moved that down and that was appreciated, and I do feel like that's far enough west that you can cover it with some, you know, trees and stuff and it's kind of far. It probably won't be that tall, I, you know, but if it's a cold storage building or these other large industrial buildings like they just built, you know, those are pretty tall and, you know.
They can be.
Yeah, and, and in addition to the trucks, I mean, it's, it's just an eyesore. It doesn't look as well as, you know, if you have, you know, especially if you have another residential, which I'm glad to hear that that other parcels like off the, you know, that can never go. Yeah, exactly.
It's always been off for us, not only that one, but anything. Like I said, we had proposals for 2 million square feet of industrial that was going to go in that vacant land east of Gauger, north of where they wanted to put the solar farm, because we said no to the industrial and then we put the solar farm as well. So, north of, of the Lincoln Way West High School. So, because we said we're not going to put anything east of Gauger, that's not going to happen.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, definitely, and I do see the rationale there, and I mean, I think that you guys are on the right track, and I think already going to last week's meeting, I was going into it going, ah, I don't really know how much we're going to do, but I, I did hear the other concerns that there already are and there's a lot on this board already.
Sure.
And, you know, there's a lot of question marks, you know, when's Leraway Road going to be wide and fully, when's Gauger Road going to be wide and fully? Why does this have to be now? Maybe in five, 10 years, it makes more sense. Like, why does this have to be now with all these question marks from Northern Builders where they're non-committal of what building is going to go there? You know, they don't have the answers either, so I just don't see that this has to be approved now. Maybe it's good for future use for the site, but with all these other question marks, it just seems way too soon.
Well, allowing somebody, that's, that's the point that we were bringing up.
Yes.
Was allowing them to be able to secure and, as they said, get the entitlements to it, is different than being able to occupy.
Yeah.
And because this is temporary, they still have to go through site plan approval with whatever they would bring in. So if they came in and said, we want to put a seven-story building or whatever, they have to go through sites plan approval through the village as a process they have to go through, but so that's why I asked if they objected to the widening of those roads that could accommodate any of this kind of thing.
Yeah.
Because you're right, if you put that in there, if they said, we've got a user that wants to put the building up, we're going to start construction in a month.
Yeah.
That's a problem.
Yeah, I mean, but it's with anything, you know, it's, it's more of recency bias if, you know, this is the hot topic right now. Four years down the road, when things kind of, you know, go to the wayside and that, those building approvals do, do go through, you might not have as much public, you know.
Oh, no, they're tied, it would be tied to it in this, that would say you cannot occupy a building until this is complete. So it's not like just time could go by and say, oh, forget it. It's, that's the only thing that was approved. If it was going to be changed or requested to be changed, you got to go through the whole process all over again.
Yeah, no, definitely, and, and I just don't see why, why this process can't be delayed until later. Why does it have to be at this time? And I understand somebody selling the property.
Yeah.
But it's just, there's just way too many of the question marks in the area that I think those need to be addressed first. Wait till Gauger Road is widened. You know, we know how counties work and governments, I mean, I, things don't always go as planned. And I just don't think the, the benefits outweigh the cons here of, you know, the, the small benefits. And the fact that it's benefiting Joliet Schools too, it's like, you know, it just, it just doesn't seem to be advantageous for New Lennox.
Well, New Lennox Grade School District would disagree, but.
Yeah.
And, and.
No, absolutely.
And the park district.
But if their, but if their teachers live in our neighborhood.
And if it's developed residentially, I mean, those would still be our residence, so I don't think to just say, oh, it's Joliet. I mean, it would be New, it's annexed into New Lennox.
And, and I know, maybe, maybe you don't know that, and a lot of people don't know that.
Yeah.
There are all kind of areas where they're in the village of New Lennox. We have kids from Mokina coming to New Lennox Schools.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's just, park district boundaries and school boundaries are different than village boundaries. And so it does benefit the grade school district. As a matter of fact, just to give you another opposing view, if you went to the grade school district and asked if they'd rather have a 900,000 square foot warehouse there or apartments that are feeding kids into their school but not really giving them much tax base, they'll take this 10 times out of 10.
Yeah.
So we need all the perspective of where you're at, you know what I mean? So I'm not saying, obviously, there are valid points. We're bringing up valid points that are your concerns as well. But it is perspective, and if somebody, whoever owns the land, whether it's the existing landowner, if it's them, if they can't occupy it per the agreement until the roads are widened, those concerns are addressed, well, then it doesn't matter who owns the land. So when you talk about the urgency, who cares who the landowners, it's what happens on that land, and if it's tied to these things that are addressing it, that's a whole nother issue.
And I'll make my last comment just because I know a lot of the people are here.
Go ahead.
If the teachers of that school, the New Lennox School that's benefiting, and their children lived in this area, they would not want that building.
That's true, but I'll also tell you, I lived in Bluestone Bay as a trustee when Joliet Road didn't go through and Target and Lowe's didn't exist, and my neighbor said, vote no, don't let Target and Lowe's come here. And 95% of the town would have wanted to hang me if I voted no for that. So it's, you know, NIMBY, you've heard that.
Yeah.
But just because it's only a pocket of people that are being negatively affected, that's still important. We can't say, well, 95% of the town doesn't care, so we're going to do it. All, you know, the legitimate concerns, of which there are many, of the people who live in that area have to be addressed. And that's the whole point of this. So going back to your initial comment, number one, we don't own the land. Number two, as you know, where we were going to put our wastewater treatment plant, we moved it because of the concerns of people. And you alluded to this relationship with Northern as if it's nefarious. It's not. They are a great contributor to our community with a beautiful business park that does feed a lot of New Lennox taxes and provides for a lot of services that the kids get in town, that the residents get in town. And I think that for 25 years, I mean, you've seen other industrial areas, I'm sure, it's a beautiful business park. And so they are responsible builders, and so yes, we do have a great relationship with them and we appreciate that. But just because we have that great relationship and we recognize that they're a great community member, doesn't mean they just get to do what they want. That's why we're doing what we're doing here tonight.
Yeah, no, and I was just saying, if a third party that did not have an existing relationship, all these concerns would overwhelm the benefits that, that they have.
That's, no, it's completely irrelevant.
Okay.
It's completely irrelevant, because there's all kind of people that build in this town that are first-time builders. You know, that's, it, it helps that we know their reputation and that they've been in this community for 25 years and have, are a proven entity. So yes, as far as trusting their word and what they say, absolutely that helps. But if anyone else was proposing, we'd be going through the same exact process that we're going through right now, regardless of who it was. It's just that there's a little more comfort in knowing that who, we can trust someone that we have known for 25 years.
Appreciate your time.
Now, we appreciate you, thank you. Who else would like to speak? Come on up, please. Just state your name for the record, thank you.
Mike Gianpaulo.
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, thanks for your concerns, thanks for the process, and I know you guys are, are doing your job, so please don't take this as, you know, we're at you guys. But the, the one thing I want to bring up is the concerns are super valid. The traffic concerns, the high schools, there's two high schools as well using Gauger, there's also Providence.
Sure.
So let's not forget about that. There's two sets of kids going to high school every day on this road. So to me, we're talking about zoning, right? Now it's residential, they'd like it to be industrial. They'd like to be industrial because they can get a good deal on the parcel, good business, no shame here.
Hmm.
Why don't we, or this is a concept here, you can buy the property, we can wait to rezone it, your defensive move's in place, nobody can take this from you. Once the roads are in place, so we understand what the community wants for that area, maybe commercial makes sense. You can build that. What I can say is, from our community standpoint, we don't really prefer or like to have another giant warehouse right on the doorstep of, of our community, which is kind of the entry point to New Lennox. In six, seven years, when everything's done, maybe we want something different for that area. So why don't we leave that option available? You can still have your mission successful by making your defensive move, and we can readdress this as a community at that time.
All right.
Thank you.
No, of course, appreciate your comments, thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Paul Berlin. I also, I live in Jacobs Field. I'm also a professional engineer, so I've worked on probably at least a handful of these types of projects in the last two years, so. The one thing about rezoning, I think everyone's bringing up concerns, Jeff, that's, that is a change to the plan of the city, right? So we got to think about that. It was planned to be residential there. I know, we all built in this neighborhood, I built there nine years ago. I don't know if everyone did, but I did look at the zoning around where I was building my house, okay? So, you know, doing what I do, I see lots of areas where it started like this and it ended up, and you end up with a bunch of industrial warehouses surrounding residential places, and it might look fine when they first build it, but you also have to think 20, 30 years down the road, what does this look like? We also have to think about who's going to occupy this. It's a, you said it's an I-1 industrial, so it's a light industrial zoning, right? So the, but that also includes, it doesn't mean it's going to be an open warehouse with shelves. It doesn't mean it's just going to be a refrigerator house, which is another upscale there. You can do manufacturing in light industrial zones, you can do fabrication in light industrial zones. And I've worked on projects in these exact types of buildings for like final food processing and things like that. There are hazardous materials involved in a lot of those installations. And the people that own those businesses, once they're built and put in by code by engineers, things change. Okay, so there are schools right there, our neighborhood is right above it, and right now, you know, thinking about planning the future, our neighborhood, I've been there nine years.
Yeah.
When I moved in, I was like, it's kind of disconnected, it'll build up around it, right? There's still no sidewalk that connects the neighborhood to the school or a bike path, to the bike path in the neighborhood, to the north or to the east. So our kids live a mile from high school. Takes them 30 minutes, 45 minutes or more on a bus to get there, to go a mile, because they can't walk there, there's no sidewalk. And there's, you know, there's a lot of truck traffic on the road. There's only going to be more truck traffic, whether you rezone this or don't rezone it, because it's already industrial to the north with the business park that already exists. So I, I have a lot of concerns about just rezoning it in general. Like, I think it was mentioned, you know, it can be rezoned in other ways. I think what this feels like, it's, I understand that the landowner wants to sell his parcel, but he also knew it was zone residential. So.
No, I understand. I mean, but to your point, you've been there nine years, but you moved across the street from the business park, which has been there 25 years, and you're in a beautiful subdivision. And I mean, I don't, I mean, I, knowing what you know, I don't think you would have moved or built in Jacobs Field if you thought that that massive industrial across the street from that business park was going to cause those kind of problems.
It's also set back a lot farther up north. There's, and this setback's okay, I mean, 50 feet's 50 feet, but those are set back pretty far right now, and as you go further north, there's not residential right across the street from it. So it depends on how it's developed, it depends who occupies it.
Sure.
There's a lot of things to consider.
Sure.
But the other thing is, there hasn't been, that, you know, nine years, there hasn't been the residential improvements made to connect that area to the rest of the community either. So there hasn't been that side.
The widening's bring pedestrian, it does have pedestrian design with both the Gauger and the Leraway does have a, will have a bike path.
That's right, and you know the land in between Jacobs Field and the railroad tracks, north of Jacobs Field. There have been people that have come propose for that that were residential, but I don't know that the people in Jacobs Field would have appreciated what it was. There was a lot of multifamily that was being proposed for it, so you wouldn't want the multifamily either. And so that's what I'm saying is, just because it's residential doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be what you want in your neighborhood, and that's what was proposed for, just to the north of you, in between Jacobs Field and the high school, was multifamily, but we knew that and for that transition, and therefore didn't move forward in trying to protect the people of Jacobs Field for what that should be, and so that has sat big because of that. Okay?
All right.
Thank you for being here. Yes, sir.
I also live in Jacobs Field, Brian Lewandowski, I'm at 1655 Cobb. Do you guys realize how much some of the families have spent to live in Jacobs Field? You know, and I think that has to be taken into consideration, because at no point did I ever envision being boxed in by industrial development. You know, so at the end of the day, my house butts up to Gauger, so I get to, I get to see what's happening with the, the complex that did go up. Do you guys know what it's like not being able to keep your windows open at night because, you know, you get to listen to trucks shift through gears or trucks slow down with brake brakes? Do you guys know what that's like? Because it's, it's painful. It's brutally painful, you guys. And at the end of the day, I think we need to reconsider what we're doing here. You know, you're adding in more traffic, we're going to be putting in an overpass, so those trucks are going to have to slow down. You're bringing in more trucks, a lot of starting and stopping, this is going to put a lot, a lot of headaches on, that need to be reconsidered here.
Okay, appreciate you being here, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Doug Gawn, I live at Country View, we live in, been there 40 years.
Okay.
Cameras come back to me, because I was sitting where you guys are sitting seven years ago. I worked for CSX Railroad for 40 years and we, I was superintendent in Chicago. We were expanding ramps, going to villages, had great working relationship with a lot of villages. And when you said peak time, I'm curious, what's peak time to you?
Hey, what, yeah, what, that's, that's a fair question. What, what do you, what do you consider peak hours, you say?
What do you consider peak? Because there is no peak in the trucking industry. It varies every day.
No, I, I, if, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what you're saying is like rush hour times, the difference for vehicular traffic, if it was residential as opposed to truck traffic, is truck traffic is steady throughout the whole day as opposed to it's heavier, a one-timer.
Well, here's what you got. You got Global 4, Center Point, 6.8 miles
Hmm.
to our west.
Hmm.
Shanahan's building another facility, going to open up in '26, '27.
Hmm.
Route 80's under construction for the next five years before they get leased. The trucks right now currently, they don't use the tollway that was built, they go down 53 or they come to Briggs, or they come to Gauger, or they go straight down Leraway Road. That's all from the intermodal facilities. So you're going to get a lot of business out of the intermodal facilities for this, for this warehouse. I know that. So I'm just hoping that the board, because we appreciate you moving the plant further.
Sure, sure.
But you did say, as long as I'm mayor, I won't allow a warehouse in the village.
We said we'd never go east of Gauger Road.
Yep.
And, and we won't.
I appreciate that.
And we haven't.
I appreciate that.
And we haven't. Like I said, we've had a lot of opportunities that people have offered, and we have not let anything go east of Gauger Road. And I will reiterate, as long as I'm mayor, I will not support any of that.
So I hope the board, because I just got involved when I saw the sign up there saying.
Sure.
For the.
The public hearing.
Public hearing.
Hey, listen, that's why we're.
I went, oh my God, so.
If you were, if you, if you were here when we did the wastewater treatment plant, you remember, we moved it over to Lincoln Way West because there were 600 people.
That's right.
And that's what we did. So, listen.
And I know you're. I know what you're doing, and I appreciate that you're looking to figure out the business, and I understand that, but that's not the place to do it.
No, we, we appreciate the comments, and the reality is, people have a right to present to the board and the community has a right to state their objections and the board ask their questions and, and handle the, the concerns. That's why we do this. I mean, no, there isn't anybody here that's doing anything they shouldn't be doing, and they're not the adversary, it's just they have, this is what they do and you have a right to come voice your opinion, that's why we're here.
It's a slippery slope once we start doing this, because then you've got all those fields along Leraway and, I mean.
Are you talking to the west?
Going east on Leraway.
No, well, that's what we just said. We, and we've had plenty of opportunities for people to develop.
Then it opens up.
But we haven't started.
I know, don't.
This is still west.
Don't, don't, don't. And, you know, Leraway, you talk about expansion of Gauger. I mean, Leraway Road's been over a year now, and they still aren't getting done with it. And it's only going from our subdivision to Cedar.
Hmm.
I mean, I don't know what they're doing.
Well, I can't speak to that either.
I just can't figure out.
I don't know what they're doing either, but I know.
Whoever designed it?
Well, but, but again, to the point.
Turnoffs too many, and I go, oh my God.
That, that is the point. That's where we talked about trying to tie it into occupancy into completion of a project. I, yeah, and I can't answer what's happening there either. It's not our project.
And after the meeting, I want to ask you a question about a little bike path. Sure, I'll show you where. Sure, I'll show you where, maybe the village.
I'll be more than happy to answer it too, and I hate to do this to Robin's bike path.
They ended it right at Miss O'Connor's house, the sidewalk. Just go a little farther to.
Well, there are, are you talking about, are going east from you guys?
Going west, yeah, going, it's the sidewalk.
By Lincoln Way?
At the last house on, on Lareway, the last house there before Country View subdivision.
Okay.
It ends there, and it goes all the way, so you can get to the bike paths. Saying, can they go another couple hundred feet to connect?
We'll see.
Yeah.
All right, well, we'll, we'll look at that anyway. All right.
Appreciate your time, Ray.
Thank you. Okay, yes ma'am?
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, I'm Stephanie Leave. I live south of Jacobs Field, right off of Delaney, if Gauger were to go through. And we were here for the sewer treatment plant, so thank you for that.
Yes, of course.
Um, I am gonna echo pretty much everything what everybody else said.
Sure.
Except, I'm gonna disagree with the gentleman in purple who said that the berms are actually amazing on Gauger, cause I don't think they are. If you said it, or somebody said it, whatever.
All right.
No, it's, okay, somebody else said it.
Okay.
Um, cause I, I, you know, I drive there almost every day myself as well.
Sure.
So I think that's one of the concerns. Robin, can I have a medium favor from you? Can you go back to the zoning map for a second? Cause I was pretty shocked at the existing industrial. And I think whoever asked the question about the open existing industrial.
That was me.
Thank you. Um, I, I think that says something, and I struggle with the idea of coming south of, of Lareway for everything that you've already said. The one big thing that hasn't been brought up yet, I think everybody saw on the news that the Speedway is opening up again for '26.
Yes.
Been there, done that? We can hear the, the racetrack from our backyard, and when there are races, it's crazy.
How about when they had that electric festival?
Oh dude, we didn't sleep for like four days.
I lived in Bluestone, I heard it, I thought.
Oh yeah, it was, it was bad.
It was horrible.
Um, so that's the one thing too, that, God love Joliet, if they can extend the Speedway. Well, different conversation. If they can extend that, then that increases more traffic. I've been on Lareway, when there's accidents on 80, I think to the gentleman's point, you know, in Country Creek. For whatever reason, Lareway seems to be the alternate for 80.
Sure.
Especially with the construction.
Sure.
And the expressway to your point where they didn't connect 57, different conversation. And then I'm also gonna echo the conversation about the Lareway expansion, and me and my fake watch, how long that's taking, and the funding. I appreciate Kurt, your comment about the funding for the widening of Gauger. And I've driven my kids to Lareway West more times than I care to admit. But I, I just struggle with the idea of adding more traffic, especially when there's already a ton of industrial that hasn't been developed. And yes, we have no control over what Joliet does, but I thought that was it. And then I'm, I'm hugely a, a big fan of, when it does get expanded, both roads, then come back for the rezoning. That would be my strong recommendation.
Well, and, and I appreciate that, Stephanie, and I, and I think that's where we're at. See, this is all about, we have to do what's right. We have to, we have to look at compromise, have to look at all situations. But I think we all agree, Gauger Road is already a mess. And whether this was approved or not, with the rest of the business park developing, and, and we want them to be successful. We want the business park to be successful. That's why we keep what we keep, west of Gauger Road. But that's why I specifically asked them, again, owning the property, getting a permission, whatever. In, in these proceedings, if this were to move forward and we tie an occupancy permit to the roads being completed, then that, it doesn't matter, because they can't occupy the building. And that's not something that even if I'm not the mayor and they're not the board, then a new mayor and board can just say, yeah, okay, go ahead. They gotta go through that process all over again of what happened. So there, again, fortunately, and I appreciate this, everybody's come up, has been respectful, has voiced legitimate concerns. We share those concerns. So it's a matter of, is there a way that makes sense to make this work? And at the end of the day, if there isn't, there isn't. But your concerns are incredibly important to us. But again, they were our concerns without even knowing what you were saying, because we're here to represent you. And that's why we have said, we're not doing anything east of, we're not doing this. And your, your comment about Lareway Road. Listen, I have a lady that goes to the Nelson campus every day, that doesn't know what that intersection at Lareway and Nelson's gonna look like from one day to the next. It's incredibly dangerous, and it's a mess. So, and that's, you got a bunch of younger kids going to that school every day. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Of course, come on up. Oh.
Oh, sorry.
You're like the truck that just cut in front of her.
So, Eric Alts, I am not a resident of New Lenox, I am from your neighbor to the south, I'm Manhattan. I wanted to thank you for your concerns about Lincoln Way West. My son just began his freshman year last week. It's terrifying that he's going to get a permit next January. I recognize that if this goes through, it's not gonna necessarily impact his drive to New Lenox by the time he graduates in '29. But he has a little sister who's six years behind him. And this does have the potential to impact her and her busing. And I don't want it to be like what happens in Elwood with Route 53 where kids have a perpetual excuse pass for like 30 minutes. I don't want that for her. So I, my, my preference, I recognize that you lean to try to potentially allow this to happen, but please tie it to the completion of the Gauger Road. I recognize that the county has told you that they have the funding in hand. Could you please tell them to update their website? It's still showing that the, that the construction's gonna begin last year. So, you know, it, it would be a lot more truthful of what the county's telling you, if they would be willing to tell us, their constituents as well. But you can do what you can, but anyways, thank you for.
No, thank you. And, and we've been, obviously, we were very involved in that, even though it's not our road. We had funds from our friends from Canadian National, that they can, we insisted they contribute funds to Phase 1 engineering for that overpass there, even though it's not our road. So we got the ball rolling as a village, even though it's not our road, years ago. But they do have the funding, and they are aggressively, for whatever their motivation is, they are aggressively looking to move forward to expand that. And the nice thing is, because I have kids that come to Union that are late every day because of the trains. And so with that overpass, that will help with that sort of thing. So, no, I, I agree, that's why I asked a question about tying occupancy to the completion of the road project.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now you may come up.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Doug Goh, I've lived in New Lenox for 28 years. I've been in the Royal Meadow subdivision. I'm not a good public speaker, so I, just ignore me if I talk in circles.
That's all right, Deb.
When, our backyard faces the peaceful farm field. We chose to build in this location here because the farm field and knowing the farm property wasn't on the market at that time. When they proposed building the sewage water treatment plant a few years ago, we were heartbroken. It wasn't an ideal situation, but we're happy that the city did work with us and moved that further west of us. So thank you for that.
Of course.
Now we have developers wanting to build industrial in the plot west of the sewage plant, stating like a selling point that it'll be a great buffer from the sewage plant. I'm, I'm guessing that when the sewage plant was going through, in that budget, they said that they would have a buffer.
Yes, well, yeah, burm-ing and that kind of.
A berm or something, so what happens to that money that was set aside for that if this goes through?
Well, I mean, we'd have to see what's proposed, but we're already moving forward with our, with our project, yeah.
So, it's just little points and things.
Sure.
I wasn't prepared to talk today.
That's okay.
But I was going to, not going to, going to, not going to.
Well, we're glad you decided to. Go ahead.
The idea of having industrial, you know, development in our backyard is unsettling. The increase of traffic is concerning, is the poor air quality and noise that comes with industrial property. Trustee Amy, I, I agree with you with the traffic with the kids in school. That's a big concern, we have that local high school not far down the road. We have many young drivers that live very close in proximity to the school. I also fear trucks, as I have been hit on I-80 twice by semis. Thankfully, they were going slow to just where I had damage to my vehicle, but very anxiety around trucks, you know? They, they just can't stop like a car can, it takes them quite a while.
Sure.
When you look in your rearview mirror and you see this big grill in your back, you're, oh, you brace for it. So I fear for all the young, young kids, new drivers. I don't know if they did a road tube traffic counter done that would.
They did a traffic survey, yeah.
The survey, okay, I wanted to know about that. Delaney, Delaney Road is a nightmare, okay? We have several people that are jumping off of Lareway to go to Delaney. If you're not doing 60 miles an hour, you're getting run off the road. When you come out of our subdivision, it's hard to get out. So it's very scary. And they put that new stop sign, which was very good.
Yes, that was us, even though it wasn't ours.
And thank you for that, because people were flying through there, and when they did put those in.
They still do, they want the stops.
They, they do, there was many accidents at, at the beginning, because people didn't know it was there. So, but I know by the farmer's house, if you're going west, it says the speed limit's 45, and if you're heading east, it says 35, so it's very confusing. But that's their home too. You shouldn't be doing, you know, more than 35 miles an hour going past there. So I feel for them for that. And I was very relieved that nothing is going east of that. Because that was my concern when I was looking on here, I'm like, it's colored in here. I'm like, does that mean that this is moving over? Just, I would just hope that they would stop gobbling up the farmland for industrial, that, that's all.
I understand, I understand.
And I thank you for letting me talk, and I'm sorry for talking in circles.
That's all right, you did, you did just fine.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, you too, Deb. I would, I would say this, and Robin, not that this is something that will make you pray for industrial on this land, but with the wastewater treatment plant there, and what we've seen in transitions, I mean, normally you would look at multifamily that would probably transition on these parcels, correct?
Right, and that's what the R3 zoning contemplated.
Yeah, and I mean, and that's the thing too, so it's one of those things, and, and you're all entitled to your own opinion. But you've got, you know, I don't know if this is, what is it, buildable, 60 acres or, or something buildable maybe? And the parcel to the east of it is maybe 50 acres of buildable. But we're talking about, potentially, that's where the park district could put a dog park, that's where there's some wetlands back there. But you could be looking at 100 acres, because you've got the wastewater treatment plant. And, and then you've got that 100 acres or so that could be multifamily residential that goes in there. So, you know, if, not that that's what, but that's probably who's gonna develop there. I can't imagine, you know, you take Jacobs Field, they're not gonna build next to the wastewater treatment plant. And so, understand that that too, if this remains residential, that will probably be what will come before us eventually, is multifamily to take up that 100 acres or so, with some commercial probably on Lareway. I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Hi, Mike Gale, Jacobs Field. We're talking about the property east of Gauger here.
Yes.
And we talk about as you're in office currently.
Yes.
And what would be happening if you were not in office.
Can't speak to.
Exactly, so we're unsure of that.
That's correct.
And Mr. Carroll spoke of the widening of the road on Gauger. Well, if anybody's been on 53, that is two lanes, both way north and south. I was on that today, it was backed up from 80 and 53 all the way to Lareway.
Yeah.
And from Lareway and 53 all the way to Arsenal Road was backed up today. And putting in these more factors, I think it's just gonna add to the traffic there. And we're talking about aesthetically pleasing the factories, I don't know, anybody a rectangle building, gray and white? Not aesthetically pleasing to myself, maybe to someone else, but not me. And then I don't know if they've noticed the trees that they planted along Spencer Road, they put them right underneath the Comet power lines. Now, those trees are going to grow someday and probably cause some type of an outage at some point. I don't know if anybody took that into consideration. And the other thing going on Lareway Road is all the walls that we're looking at now.
Yeah.
Like who wants to look at walls?
On the widening, you mean?
Yeah, when, yeah, they're putting on, you know, I understand they're doing that for the, you know, the homeowners.
Sure.
Who wants to look at a brick wall all day? You know, we're gonna probably cut down more trees on Lareway going west of Nelson now. Cause that's gonna have to be widened, so all those trees, I'm sure those people are gonna lose that, and they're probably gonna get a brick wall there.
Yeah, that would be my guess, is they'll, they'll want the sound law wall better than, but it's not, yeah, it's not exactly the best looking. It's not the best look.
I mean, putting a berm on the east side of the water reclamation district would be a nice buffer for houses too.
Right, but realistically, just knowing what we know and what we've seen, I don't imagine that's gonna be single-family residential that's gonna wanna build next to there, even though there is a berm. Cause you gotta remember, there are still people who are upset that we're putting the wastewater treatment plant where we're putting it, even though we're taking it out of a residential neighborhood and moving it further down.
Joliet has a large, same thing on Black Road and Ridge Road, and there's housing all around that.
Right, I don't know which was there first, to be perfectly candid with you. I don't, I, I can't speak to that, I don't know.
Right.
But yeah, but no, I appreciate your comments.
I appreciate you.
All right, thank you very much for being here. Okay. All right, yes sir.
I'll let you go. Sorry.
No, that's all right.
Just move up a row.
I've been waiting for a half hour.
My name's Scott Ror, I never planned to speak tonight, but.
That's okay.
I'm a terrible public speaker, so I'm gonna crackle and sound like I'm in puberty, but. One thing I gotta say to these northern guys, I live right on Sanford Ave, so I'm one of those houses that backs up to, I'm right on the end of the wastewater treatment facility now.
Okay.
100% still live down the street from the wastewater treatment facility than stare at one of these warehouses in my backyard. You know, they look nice these days and all that, but the wastewater treatment, I don't hear trucks at 1 a.m. coming out, I don't see lights. That new one that's across Gauger from Jacobs Field, I still see the Christmas lights when my windows are open at night, like the dock lights. My four-year-old calls them, the Christmas lights, if we have our blinds open at night, cause she can see the dock lights from the one on the other side of Gauger.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm super nervous.
That's all right, don't be nervous, go ahead.
We've already gone over truck traffic, safety and all that stuff, but like the lights from the trucks, is the berm gonna go on the east side of Gauger as well? Like if you, if you extend Gauger down, is, or is the berm, it's gonna be on the west side of Gauger, but like where you pull out the trucks? What about, like all of us on Sanford, those lights would be coming into all our backyards as they pull out? As they're turning onto Gauger.
No, yes, I, I understand your question. So you're saying it's on the east side, but when they pull out into Gauger Road?
Yeah.
The stuff, yeah, they wouldn't own that parcel.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, like, consideration for everything else with.
That would be, depending on who develops over.
No, 100%.
No, it's.
But I'm saying even temporarily for now, until something was to get developed. And I will say, we've been here five years, we love it, love you as our mayor.
Thank you.
And we zon, we bought where we were because it was zoned residential. And we looked at that and knew it wasn't commercial or industrial. Times change, I get it.
That's fair, that's a fair point.
Also on Friday, we got new neighbors next to us, 23-year-old couple, married a couple months, just bought the house. And I go, I go, what'd you guys like about the house? And they go, they have you, right there, that's why I bought this. That's all I got.
Good enough, you did a nice job, thank you.
Dennis McGlocklin, I am officially not a resident of the village. I have lived on Delaney Road my whole life, and first and foremost, it made my heart feel good to hear you talk about the Second Amendment in a positive manner. We've been under attack for a long time.
Yes, it has.
If you could pull up the site plan, please, Robin? The first issue I have is your traffic study, I said this last week, I'm gonna say it again. I'd rather be on the road with eight cars than one semi. Gentleman was up here last week, he said the truck drivers are bad enough, but the drivers are subpar. Everyone, I don't know if they've seen it, down in Florida, driver did a U-turn in the middle of the turnpike, killed three people.
Yes, horrible.
All right, and the other issue I have is the Gauger Road, is it gonna be under New West jurisdiction?
Yes.
Two lane or four lane?
That, what, what's the, what would the original proposal be? Well, would they have to do both sides?
Yeah, so they would have to do both sides, and it, and minimum would have to be the full four lane to match up with the intersection, what, where that tapers down to the south.
But it would be at least to where their access is. So if they had an access into their site off of Gauger, it would have to be four lane minimum, all the way to that access.
Okay, so basically, anyone who wants to develop property between Lareway Road and Delaney Road would have to set aside property for Gauger Road extension, correct? Okay, so basically, anyone who wants to develop property between Laraway Road and Delaney Road would have to set aside property for Gauger Road extension, correct?
What, what could, I mean, could it connect all the way out, uh, there? Cause I know there's issues.
There's flood plain, it would not be.
There is flood plain, but I mean, that's what bridges are for, correct?
Right, I mean, it's possible, it's possible.
It's possible, but that's, that's a pretty expensive proposition.
We're asking them to dedicate it all the way across their property to what is now the village property, the flood plain. So that if it need, you know, if there's a desire or a need for it to extend, it can.
It can, but right, with those, yeah.
And then speaking to you guys again, I understand, everyone here is a cause for these warehouses having to come in. Everybody's buying stuff over their phone, it's a need. Does it need to go there? Not necessarily. We went back and forth for the sewer plant, and yes, you guys moved it to a great location.
Mm-hmm.
And it's what makes everyone happy.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see this making everybody happy. It's a want, not a need. A sewer plant, you gotta have.
True.
You know, and, and even, even in the delay timeline, I don't think it's an appropriate thing. If this thing does have to come, I don't like the fact that there's no southern border to block the warehouse. Yes, the east side blocks from Country Creek or Country View, but everyone from Palmer Ranch and myself included on Delaney Road will be looking at the backside of that building.
Oh, okay, well, you're, you're saying the detention in the back of the building, there's no buring or anything?
There's no buring, there's no landscape buffer, and if they do decide to put this in, I think they need to go above and beyond with this landscape berm. I understand you say people don't want to move into a area where there's a, a tent or a warehouse or a, a sewer treatment plant.
Right.
There's people going to come from Chicago, build with that back in their backyard, and they'll think they got country living. Cause it's better than what they got. This is a better, better transition for them. I've told you in the past that you guys are doing a great job of steering the village in the right direction.
Appreciate it.
I don't think this is necessarily in the right direction. But like I said, if this has to go, I would like to see taller berms, heavier landscaping, and if it's not a twenty-four-hour operation, reduce the lighting at night. I feel for these people who live in Palmer Ranch.
Right.
Tornado came through last year, they had a nice white PVC fence, that's gone. Now it's a wrought iron fence, you can see right through it. So I think we need to keep the standard high for these buildings if they do want to come in.
Okay.
And I sincerely think that the traffic is going to be a nightmare. Laraway Road, when it's completed, I think is going to be underfunded or under, underdeveloped. It should be wider, obviously you can't do that. And I said before at the meeting last week, I think the village of New Lennox, the Makena and Frankfurt and Manhattan need to start doing truck enforcement.
We, believe me, we do, but we're, the courts have limited a lot of what we can do with that too and the success that we have. But we do do truck enforcement. I, and I, I think so, I think the other towns do too as well, I can't speak.
Well, I know, Elwood does and Wilmington does.
Yeah.
But I mean, the thing of it is, like they said, you, I can tell when there's an accident on I eighty. The pet traffic picks up on Laraway and it picks up on Delaney.
They all come down Laraway.
Yeah.
And that's exactly right, and that's that double-edged sword where, why the county is widening Laraway. And yes, it will help because it's wider, um, but those trucks are coming anyway. But yeah, it's, it's horrible.
Well, the thing of it is, I don't know if most people know this, but from fifty-three to forty-five, everybody knows what the traffic's like on Laraway.
Mm-hmm.
You go a mile south on Delaney, you're probably reduced to four stop signs to get from fifty-three to forty-five.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the favorite part of everybody.
Mm-hmm.
And to see that they speed on there is an understatement.
Mm-hmm.
And my other question is, you're saying keeping everything west of Gauger Road.
Yes.
If Gauger Road were to come through to Delaney, would that necessarily mean that you would allow industrial on the south side of the creek?
Well, I don't think you can't because that's wetlands and, or what's the issue? There's no, there's no land and plus it's.
There is, there is, but.
Not enough.
There's plenty of land, Harsh Homes.
The creek provides a good buffer from the industrial that, I don't think it would make, I don't think it would make sense to jump the creek and do more.
Well, but you've got to remember, on the, on the north side of Lar- this is west of Gauger, and the north side of Laraway is industrial.
Right.
On the south side of Delaney is residential.
Well, we'll have residential right on the other side of this, if it ever goes through.
What do you mean?
If they ever develop what's called the Brookman Farm, the what Harsh Homes owns, that is trying to sell.
On the north side of Delaney.
On the north side of Delaney. So you'd have the same.
If they do.
Pardon?
If they do, yeah.
If they do, yeah. And the money they're asking for, it's development money. I know what they're asking for.
Yeah.
And that's what they're gearing for.
This is the comprehensive plan, so the green kind of represents the existing flood plain. So that is such a substantial buffer, it wouldn't make sense to jump that and put industrial south.
And it, yeah.
And Delaney, and I don't believe Delaney's a truck route.
Delaney would not allow it, yeah, Delaney.
Okay, then devil's advocate, that flood plain being the way it is, would you stop Gauger Road at that flood plain? Or would you continue south to Delaney?
Well, see, that's, that's what we were talking about, Robin. I know they could build a bridge and build out all that other stuff, but.
I mean, if they can bring three fifty-five across this way in the river.
That's why we're only having, um, Gauger Road improved to the access point that they would need for this site if it gets approved, not to go all the way through.
Ideally also in that, in our area where we show the landscape, uh, the greenscape area there for parks and open space, the county, uh, forest preserve is ideally, you're looking at a corridor for a bike path through that area to, to, to go all the way down to, uh.
The Whupon Sea.
Yes, Whupon.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
All right.
All right, well, like I told you before, I think this would be a great site for the Bears Stadium.
(laughing).
If they continue to stink, they could burn the smell on the sewer plant.
If you think there's people in the room now, we put the Bears Stadium, worry about traffic? We could put the White Sox, there'd be nobody there.
Then we'd be seventeen, oh, sixteen Sundays out of the year, the Bears never make it to the postseason.
That's right, that's right. Sorry, Kurt, I had to give you that shot.
My name is Arthur Goff, I live in Royal Meadows. Uh, I spoke last week at the zoning meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I, I had brought up that, uh, when you listen to the ballgame.
Mm-hmm.
And there's a commercial for New Lennox.
Mm-hmm.
And it talks about the quality of life.
Mm-hmm.
More warehouses I don't associate with the quality of life. I'm tired of looking at the back of warehouses. There's not a week goes by that I don't think, why are they building more warehouses? Why is Will County want to become the warehouse capital of the world? This is where we live, I don't want to look, and, and you talk about buffers, what, what, what's the definition of a buffer?
Well, I guess it all depends on what the property is. And we absolutely, for example, if you go down three fifty-five, that's all warehouses till you get to New Lennox, and that's not what would be allowed to be built.
And, and I appreciate that.
We put a hospital, and we put a sports complex, and we were going to have hotels and that sort of thing. So we have, as large as this community is, which is about forty-three square miles ultimately, we have confined our warehousing to west of Gauger Road, even though there have been all kinds of opportunities and, uh, rec- uh, requests for extending east, millions of square feet, and we've said no. So I, that is the quality of life in New Lennox, that's why everybody wants to live here. It's warehouses to the west of there, it's not like it's residential to the west of there. Joliet's got warehouses up to there, and so we, we've got this little pocket where that is. And you are, I've got to tell you, Jacobs Field is one of the nicest subdivisions in town, it's beautiful. And we are concerned about truck traffic, that's why we talk about tying this into expansion and everything else, not just on the promise, but on the actual completion of, uh, that stuff. Uh, but I think we've done a really good job of controlling and containing where there's going to be those warehouses.
Well, I would like to continue to contain where we keep the warehouses.
That's right, west of Gauger Road, we will contain.
And as far as being an attractive buffer between the sewage plant and our housing, let's, I'll, you know, I'll play the part of the sewage plant. These gentlemen can plan to play the part of the housing. Here, here's my buffer between them. Isn't it attractive?
Yeah, but if it's a pile of dog crap on the other side, the shoe looks really attractive. And, and I think, and I think that's the point. The reason nobody wanted the sewer plant where we were going to put it is because they said, we don't want that by our homes. So we moved it down the road.
And I understand that.
And this is not on the east parcel, as, as they, as the representative said, they didn't even bother asking, because they could have bought both parcels. They didn't even bother asking about that east parcel because they knew that's a non-starter for us, we wouldn't allow that. I do want to remind everybody that, you know, if this stays with that residential zoning and you do have the, um, the wastewater treatment plant there, you're going to be in this room when a developer comes in and says they want to put four hundred apartments, uh, between the wastewater treatment plant and Dennis's property. Then you're all going to be in here saying, hey, where's that industrial guy? We want him to go on the west, uh, parcel again. Because, talk about traffic and talk about potential eyesore. That's where, and I'm sorry, I don't remember which, which resident said it, when you talked about, uh, someone will come from Chicago, I don't know, was it you, Dennis? Yeah, Dennis said it, and, and they'll think they're country living. Um, you put up multifamily there and that will fill up like this. That will fill up like this. And I, I don't want to speak for anyone in this room, but ask yourself the question, do you want those east and west parcels to be multifamily dwellings? Or do you want to have the, the industrial user on the west? And the east, maybe nothing because, but even at that, it's still, you could be looking at multifamily. No one's, it's a highly unlikely that somebody is going to build single-family residential homes there with the wastewater treatment.
Well, I'll ask this question, is multifamily housing going to be going in there? Because when we had the, when we had the discussion about the sewer plant, you had came up with the comment of, uh, somebody said, I'd rather see a truck warehouse, and you said, be careful what you wish for.
That's right, that's right, that's absolutely right. And so you have to ask what, I mean, we can't just, like I gave with the target thing, we'll just leave it a farm. You can't do that. So here's what your possibilities are. You've got the waste, you didn't want the wastewater treatment plant, so we moved it over. You said, I'd rather have industrial, well, here you go. Here's, here's your industrial that you asked for, closer than the wastewater treatment plant. So if you've got those parcels of land, some, the landowner has a right to sell and they have a right to develop. And so if you don't want this and you want it to remain residential, what type of residential developer would look to build there? And most likely, I mean, you all understand, even if you're not in the business, it's, would be, that kind of transition would be multifamily dwellings. If you're good with that, you're good with that, and that's okay. And I'm not saying that's wrong, I'm just saying it's not going to be, you know, Jacobs Field Part Two built next to the wastewater treatment. I don't see any developers coming in asking to do that. Or if they did, we'd say build away.
How about alternative uses for that, other than residential or industrial? I thought you had mentioned that earlier. Turn it into, uh, like you said, uh, wetlands? Get money from the federal government for it for something.
We would, we would never get it for that, there's no way. We know what we can, there's absolutely no way they would give us that money for that.
You know what, what I'm saying is it was alternate, something that's going to benefit everybody.
When the Casey's was being built at Route Thirty, um, and Joliet Highway, when the Casey's was being built.
Okay, all right.
Two years back, the people who lived behind that said, why doesn't the village build that, buy that property and make it a welcoming center with the gazebo? I don't know that, I don't know that the taxpayers would want us to spend a few million dollars to buy the land in between the wastewater treatment plant and Gauger Road and, and the east parcel there to turn it into, um, a nature center. You know, do you understand what I'm saying?
I'm understanding what you're saying, I'm just saying.
Well, that's why we understand what you're saying. That's, we brought up the same concerns, actually brought them up, you know, first, but we understand that. But we go through this process and everybody has to understand what the alternatives are and where it is. We try to always make it work to the best, uh, that we can for everybody. And to many of the comments that were made, this board's been very successful in doing that. We don't just say, well, too bad, we don't care, we just say we're doing it. We do listen, and we do try and compromise wherever we can to make things work.
Well, I know, and we appreciate the sewer plant. I mean, it's not in the optimum, but it's a lot better than it was. So don't, don't say that I'm, I'm grateful for that. But.
I didn't say that.
No, I know you didn't. I can read your mind. Um, anyway, we're, we're tired of the warehouses, the truck traffic, the, the level of drivers. They don't know what they're going to put in there yet.
Right.
Somebody brought up hazmat and chemicals.
Well, that all has to be approved.
I understand that, but this is, these are things that you need to consider, I believe.
We do, we regularly consider those things. There's other parcels, uh, that, there are people who've wanted to go in by, um, just west of Nelson Road where they wanted to put, in between, um, uh, the Trinity here and the Tom Kelly's and all in that area over there, that we said, no, 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 we're not going to allow that because of some of these potential issues that you've discussed. So we do, we look at all of that and we try to find the best, uh, solution. So we consider all of it.
All right, and then just a side note, somebody was talking about enforcing truck. I mean, and granted, you are limited.
Right.
You are limited by what you can do.
You understand, yeah.
Yes, I understand.
I know you do.
So.
Yeah, and we do what we can do, but we are limited. Listen, it's a problem because truckers, a lot of them are from this area, and they follow GPS and if they tell them to go down Haven. And so we have trucks going down Haven right here in front of the village hall. But you know, what you, you understand better than most, what you can do and what you can't do with truck enforcement.
I understand.
And, and perhaps the quality of truck drivers is not what it used to be, I understand that too. But it's not someone's fault, it's not from the area, and GPS has turned left here and turned right here. They're doing what they can, and then they find out, next thing you know, they're a semi on a residential street. It's bad.
It has a little bit to do with it.
It's bad. Well, yeah, no, it's a little bit of both, no doubt.
I, I would like to leave on a good note, and Mr. Brow. No, thank, your crew in the wintertime, I have no problem with the snow removal crew that you have.
Yeah.
They do an excellent job.
They are the best. (applause). They are the best, thanks, appreciate it. All right, up, please.
Mayor, can I make a quick comment? I just want to pose one question.
Sure.
So to your point of doing something for the village, right? A dog park, a swimming pool, save the land for that. Are you all going to be in favor to do something like that? Raise everyone's taxes, to have something put in for, for the community, for the village? Then it's, well, we don't want our taxes raised.
You raise my taxes?
So you have to.
Taxes are part of our beer, right?
Yeah, but see, but you know what? It's a good point, but again, you say you raise them anyway. We're four percent of your tax bill. And we typically don't, and we could, even though, raise them higher, but we don't. We, we, we're going to, just tangent here for a second, and that's why Kim is doing a podcast tomorrow. But, um, you know, schools make up sixty-five percent of your tax bill roughly. The state of Illinois is supposed to fund fifty percent of public education, but in this area, they fund about eleven percent. So if the state of Illinois did what they were supposed to do, which they never do, they fail constantly, then your taxes wouldn't be so high. That's why property taxes in the state of Illinois are worse than anywhere else in the country. They've surpassed New Jersey because the state of Illinois does a horrible job of what they're supposed to do. And schools are so important to us, and we've got great schools out here, but they're doing it with ten percent or eleven percent funding from the state when it's supposed to be a minimum of fifty percent. So imagine if the state was doing their part, your tax bills would plummet, but they don't. So we talk about raising taxes, that's, that's the sad reality of it. We live in the worst tax state in the country with the worst property tax system in the entire United States. And we don't control that. But the point is raised, yes, your taxes do go up. And they also go up, I think you understand, to the point of the quality of life of living in New Lennox. People want to live here. And so they pay more for your home. It's great that your home is worth a lot more than you paid for it, if you want to sell it. But if you don't want to sell it, it, it doesn't really help you, you just pay more in taxes. But it is also based, of course, on your assessment and how much your home is worth. So it's wonderful that we've got all this equity in our home because it's worth more than we paid for it. But unless you're selling, all you're doing is paying more in property taxes because you live in the absolute worst state for property taxes. Yeah, but that's, but, but that's not really what's happening. We've talked about that. We have our area of the Cherry Hill Business Park west of Gauger, that this is what, where our industrial is. It's not dragging down. Are, are the values of the homes in Jacobs Field down?
Well, right now, but like you said, if you're not mayor, whatever, two years from now, five years from now, the next mayor comes in and then he says it's okay to build.
Well, if they do that, then, then storm the castle. And, and I agree with you. I, that's true, of cour-, yes, I don't deny that. We can only control, the seven of us can only control what we can control. You are a hundred percent correct. This board has not wavered for one second on anything east of Gauger. But you'd better believe that if this board changed and they wanted to change their mind, they sure could. So I, I can't sit here and tell you that a future board wouldn't do that. They can do whatever they want. And that's why it's important you pay attention to what's happening locally. Everyone gets worried about what's going on in Washington DC. That doesn't affect your life one bit. It's what's happening here that affects your life. But that's the point. And, and that, believe me, we're just as frustrated about the taxes. One of the comments, and I apologize to your, you could've had a seat and stayed a little longer, but. But I, but I go off. One of the things that we talk about here is the state of Illinois, and I was talking to our finance director on this today, they cut our local government distributed fund, that's the income tax portion that's supposed to come to the state. We lost one point six million dollars a year because they cut us from ten percent to six point seven five percent. And our motor fuel tax, which helps build our roads, they cut that by a hundred grand. So one point seven million dollars a year. You talked about how great our snow plowing is. That's one point seven million dollars we don't have to plow your streets or put police officers on your streets. Because we run with the most inept state with the worst budget. Well. But, 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 but you see, our responsibility is providing these services for you. And when the state takes and takes and takes, this, if this warehouse is approved or not approved, it does nothing for the village. So anyway, the village coffers don't get enriched. We get four percent of a property tax bill, which is nothing. It, it doesn't do anything for us. It doesn't. But we try to have a nice balance of what happens in town. And so, and I think we've done a really good job of that. I really do. So, um, there isn't anything that anyone has said here for the most part tonight that I don't absolutely agree with. I get it. And I'm glad you're here. Because there's nothing worse than people who don't come and voice their opinion and then complain about it later. So we're glad that you're here. We serve you, but we serve thirty thousand people. And we can't just say, ah, there's only thirty of you here, who cares? We care. We've given more time than this to people who live in unincorporated areas because something that we're doing impacts them. So we care tremendously about what you have to say, even if you're just a small portion of the community. It's important to us. But we have to balance all of it. And again, I'm grateful, you've all been very respectful, you've all been understanding, and we're just, we're listening. So I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hello, Erin G. and Paolo. I also live in Jacobs Field. Um, everyone has said a lot of the comments I had to make, make tonight, but, um, the road expansions on Leroe and Gauger, um, were made before this warehouse was thought of. So already they needed to extend the roads prior to this being there.
Correct.
So now we're adding another warehouse and then potentially, if there were a time where there was a different board or someone changed the, the other parcels to industrial, it could continue to add and add. And whether or not Gauger could ever go through far, farther, could warehouses continue? Probably not, but I know in the first meeting last week, they said that there could be a possibility that warehouses could continue down Gauger if, um, Gauger was extended. So I think it's just another reason to think about the traffic. I have two little girls, eventually they're gonna be driving. I'm already scared about them driving normally, but you add the truck traffic and inexperienced drivers. It's my, my window's back up to Leroe and Gauger, um, intersection. And so I see the traffic for west every day. I see it backed up. I see when the trains are coming through. You can tell, you can tell because it's all the way backed up past Leroe. Um, the kids coming from Manhattan, the other direction. So yes, if you guys put the, put the Leroe turnoff, it's still gonna be impacting the kids coming in from Manhattan. So I just feel like it's just adding a lot to that side of Lennox. And I do, I would agree to, I would love to have a dog park or something else. I know it's tax dollars. I know that there, maybe there's parks and things that need to go up in the city that maybe that would be an opportunity for something to go over there.
No, actually, we've already talked to the park district about that parcel of land where we, that we still own, where we were going to expand the wastewater treatment plant and didn't, about swapping land with the park district so they could put a dog park in that vicinity over there. So that's absolutely on the table and I would expect we'll move forward. So we do wanna see those amenities. I think what Trustee Galuza was trying to say is, she's right. There, there was, um, when the golf course bonds were being paid off, the park district ran a referendum that was said your taxes would not have increased at all, but they wouldn't have gone down because the bonds were, they was just stayed level and, and the community voted no. And so, and that's okay. And I get it. The community's tired of, not our community, but all communities in Illinois are tired of the property taxes. I mean, talk to some of the people that live in Mattson, they're paying twenty-six thousand dollars a year for tax, for their taxes. It's insane what's happening in this state. So we, we understand it completely. We try to provide, the park district does a great job of trying to provide amenities. And there's a lot of opportunities for kids.
And I love everything you guys all do. And I think it'd be, that's an option for next to the water treatment plant and that parcel. So then residential could still go next to it and there is a buffer between the water treatment plant and residential would be some type of park or something that the park district could use that land for. Um, just an idea as, I know we're talking a lot about a buffer between the, the water treatment plants and.
It's not a bad idea, but again, what we're talking about, just and to Trustee Galuza's point, you know, this property over there could be a couple million dollars. Where we could give property to the park district in a swap out is zero.
Right.
And so that's where the taxpayers would say, that don't live where you live. I don't want you spending two million dollars by, you know, take the free one and put it, so, do you understand? We try to balance all of that. We do. We do. Again, as the mayor, I appreciate this kind of conversation. I appreciate people coming here and speaking, especially when the concerns that are brought are legitimate. There are times people come and I'm like, I don't know where you're coming from on this, but I understand. And, and to the developers' credit, they understand too. And they know that they have to do, if they want this to move forward, whether it will or not, I don't know. But if they want it to move forward, they're gonna have to address all reasonable concerns that, you know, is, is, is doable. So we're.
Well, thank you so much for.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Sorry, Cole's having the last one.
Well, that's okay. It's all right.
Mary Feely, I am a resident of Jacobs Field as well. And, right, we talked a lot about ISOs. They could do what they can and put in trees, bushes, all that kinda stuff. My plea's about safety. We are all parents. No kids in the area, no people who go in and out of both of the high schools that all of these trucks pass by. I lived across the street, grew up across the street from Lockport High School. We couldn't leave our driveway because we couldn't park on the street. Our cars were hit all the time. It's just nature of the age of sixteen to nineteen-year-olds. They're distracted, they're inexperienced, they're in a rush, trying to go somewhere else that they need to go. Adding more of these trucks to our community is reducing the safety for our children. Bottom line, we talk about, we know there's industrial, keep the industrial where industrial is meant to be. We don't need to be adding more area around this community and around our children with all of these trucks. Every time, I don't care about peak hours, all that kinda stuff. There is horns blaring all hours of the day, all hours of the night at the corner of Leroe and Gauger, of trucks not knowing to slow down, someone running the light. All this stuff happens and we're throwing our children in the mix with this. That's, that is my biggest concern. Stare at a warehouse all day, close your blinds, you know, it's, it's not the best thing, but you can also complain about the neighbor next door, do you too? Right? Those are things outside of our control. Adding more trucks to our streets and putting our children in danger is something that is within our control. And that is my ask, to refuse that this land be rezoned for something like that.
Okay, appreciate you. Thank you. Anyone?
I'd like to bring up one more point. A lot of people may or may not know, the original Cherry Hill Park, there was other exit points out of there. They can go to Mills Road, they can go all the way up to Spencer Road. This one here, they got no option but Gauger or Leroe Road.
True.
That's the big difference, I think, with the other Cherry Hill development.
True, but I will tell you, do you know that Cherry Hill Road is not a truck route?
No, it's not.
But it gets used regularly.
Correct. But my point is, I'm sure the people who live over there don't appreciate it, but it's a lot less populated.
I've got a school there with it's all day long.
I know you do. What I'm saying, there is other ways for those people, those semi-drivers to get out of that area. This one here, there's one.
It's, you're right. It's, it's, it's Leroe or Gauger, that's it.
Right. So they got no option to get around, uh, get away from the residential traffic.
That's, if they're, if they're headed east or north, you're, that's right.
All right, that's all you got.
Thank you. Okay. All right, well, again, um, any other comments from the board? All right, first of all, uh, to the developers, thank you. We appreciate you, uh, coming forward, being, uh, transparent with what your plans are, what you wanna do. We appreciate your history with this village and what you've done and the quality of work that you've done. To the residents, thank you for being respectful and understanding. This is good discourse. This is what government's supposed to do, have conversation with its residents. Uh, I would suspect after all of this conversation, um, the, uh, developers will work with staff again to see, uh, where they could or couldn't proceed, uh, on this. Typically, what would happen if they were moving forward is this would come before the board at the next board meeting, uh, where the board would vote on it. Um, that's, uh, provided that, uh, whatever, now with this conversation, whatever tweaks, changes, whatever there is between the developer and staff, uh, they would work through that. I would, uh, expect, I would, uh, say you should look at our agenda for two weeks from tonight, which is, uh, what's our first board meeting?
September eighth.
The eighth? For September eighth to see if this is on there. Because, uh, if it is, then it will be on the agenda for a vote for the board. Even though you've had your opportunity to speak at the plan commission and you've had your opportunity to speak tonight, in the eighteen years I've been mayor, we have always still allowed residents to speak again, uh, before a vote takes place. So I would suggest, uh, have a look at the agenda. If it's not on, uh, that agenda, that doesn't mean that it wouldn't come back before us. It could just be that it's taking them a little bit longer time to work with staff through those issues. Uh, but it's all on our agenda, which comes out the Thursday before the Monday meeting. Um, and you can always contact us here at the hall as well, uh, to see if it's moving forward or where it's at. But, um, regardless, uh, again, we appreciate you all being here tonight and voicing your concerns. And, um, we'll see where it goes from there. Okay? All right, thank you all very much. All right. Next up is consideration of, um, approval. Let me see here. All right, consideration for approval of resolution authori- authorizing a sponsorship with Bankston Farms. The next few issues deal with the, uh, sports complex. And, uh, with Bankstons, an agreement, they're gonna pay fifty-five thousand dollars over three years for exchange for interior signage, promotional and marketing items, as well as a digital package. So once again, uh, as you'll see, we continue to get, uh, sponsorships for our ball field up there, which is outstanding, which is great. Any questions on that? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Scalise, second by Trustee Wilson. Comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Mattson?
Aye.
Trustee Rizer?
Aye.
Trustee Galuza?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Scalise?
Aye.
Trustee Christopherson?
Aye.
Mayor Baldorman?
I motion carries. Next, we have consideration for approval of resolution authorizing a sponsorship agreement with Sazerac for crossroads. They are a liquor distributor. They'll pay a total of twenty-five thousand over five years in exchange for interior signage, promotional and marketing items. Any questions on that? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Rizer, second by Trustee Galuza. All right, thank you. Uh, no comments or questions? A roll call vote, please.
Trustee Christopherson?
Aye.
Trustee Galuza?
Aye.
Trustee Scalise?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Rizer?
Aye.
Trustee Mattson?
Aye.
Mayor Baldorman?
I motion carries. Now, I need consideration for approval of purchase for officer furniture from, uh, for office furniture from Heinrichsen uh, for the amount of twenty thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, twenty thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Uh, this is for the sports complex as well. Is there a motion to approve the purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Scalise, second by Trustee Mattson. There's nothing further? A roll call vote, please.
Trustee Mattson?
Aye.
Trustee Rizer?
Aye.
Trustee Galuza?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Scalise?
Aye.
Trustee Christopherson?
Aye.
Mayor Baldorman?
I motion carries. Next up is consideration for approval of purchase for utility trailer from Tractor Supply in the amount of one thousand, five hundred ninety-nine dollars, ninety-nine cents. Uh, this is to be used by our maintenance and operation teams in sport complex. Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Trustee Galuza, second by Trustee Scalise. If there's nothing further, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Christopherson?
Aye.
Trustee Galuza?
Aye.
Trustee Scalise?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Rizer?
Aye.
Trustee Mattson?
Aye.
Mayor Baldorman?
I motion carries. All right, next up is consideration for approval proposal for billboard foundation construction from all steel structures. Um, this is important. This gives us that big billboard signage off three fifty-five for our sports complex. It also kicks in the, uh, second half of the payment from Wintrust on the naming rights, once this goes up. Uh, the amount in your packet was a hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars, but there's a project labor agreement on there, which requires that there's union work that has to be done. Uh, that would be at an expense of an additional fourteen hundred dollars per day. The thought is it's gonna take about four days to do that. So it would be the one eight-six-two-eight-eight plus the fourteen hundred dollars a day, probably about an hour, five grand because of the PLA that we have on that second. Any questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the proposal?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Mattson, second by Trustee Scalise. If there's nothing further, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Christopherson?
Aye.
Trustee Mattson?
Aye.
Trustee Galuza?
Aye.
Trustee Scalise?
Aye.
Trustee Rizer?
Aye.
Mayor Baldorman?
I motion carries. Next is consideration for approval of a contract with Blue Peak Tent Rentals for Christmas in the Commons. This was a budgeted item, uh, but it is in the amount of thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy cents. This is for the tents, accessories, installation and tear down for everything we do for Christmas in the Commons, which, believe it or not, is just around the corner. So if there are no questions, there are a motion to approve the contract.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Trustee Scalise, second by Trustee Galuza. If there's nothing further, a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Rizer?
Aye.
Trustee Mattson?
Aye.
Trustee Galuza?
Aye.
Trustee Scalise?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Christopherson?
Aye.
Mayor Baldorman?
I motion carries. Next up is consideration for approval of change orders two, three and four for Phase One A of the, uh, water reclamation, uh, construction. And we're at about a hundred and forty million dollars on this. Uh, quite honestly, what Kurt, we had, we had a little miss there on, um, on, uh, by the architect and.
We did.
And one by the engineer, uh, with the change orders totaling forty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars, nineteen cents. Not happy about that. It's a minimal amount for a job that large. Um, both of them, especially the, um, the engineers, have saved us substantial dollars in other ways, uh, reviewing some strands work. But unfortunately, it was a miss and the change order is in the amount of forty-five thousand, three twenty-five and nineteen.
One, one thing I.
Go ahead.
Uh, it wasn't mentioned in here. It reminded me, I was looking at it again. Change order number one is not reflected here. It's already been accepted. We did change the construction engineer for that.
Okay.
That actually saved us two million dollars.
Right. It's still, yeah, and, and we're, for a hundred and forty million dollar project, we're still in pretty good shape.
Correct.
Um, and we have seen substantial changes, but we've got a lot of cooks in this kitchen for a big job like that, but I mean, a miss is a miss and that's where it's at. So, did you, any questions or comments? You're good?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or comments? All right, is there a motion to approve change orders two, three and four?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Trustee Scalise, second by Trustee Galuza. Any comments or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Mattson?
Aye.
Trustee Rizer?
Aye.
Trustee Galuza?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Scalise?
Aye.
Trustee Christopherson?
Aye.
Mayor Baldorman?
I motion carries. Um, let me just stop at this point to say, Brian, it's, uh, you know, we all have different skills and abilities up here. It's nice to have you having a look on, on that stuff. I know you had some conversations with Kurt about that. Uh, that's a great addition to our board, so we appreciate that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right. Next is consideration for approval of purchase, automatic gate openers for Public Works Buildings and Spencer Road Pump Station. Mark? Waited a long time, buddy. You got your attaboy on the snowplows? Did you want me to keep rolling? No, I want you to talk.
Go ahead.
You just liked the dig I gave Kurt about the White Sox.
Yeah, I liked it. Go ahead. So this is the add gate openers at, uh, three of our facilities, the old Public Works Building, the new Public Works Building and our Spencer Road Pump Station. It's kind of a three-phase thing. We, we have only gate solutions with the lowest bid to provide the actual gate openers. Um, Elliott Electric, uh, does the majority of our electric work, so they have proposed twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars to do. thousand, six hundred and forty dollars to do the electric at all three locations, and then Computers Nationwide, who's our FOB supplier, will install the controls, open these gates, they'll provide us with stickers, kind of like iPass. So as we approach the gates, they'll open and then close behind us. One deviation from the memo, they sent me some revised numbers an hour and a half ago, so they're planning on doing the work at a cost to not exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. Still leaves us under budget for this project, so this time I'm asking for approval to purchase.
Very good. Any questions for Mark on that? Alright, is there a motion to approve the purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Reiser, second by trustee Mattson. Correct? If there's nothing further, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Christopherson?
Aye.
Trustee Galuza?
Aye.
Trustee Scalise?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Mattson?
Aye.
Mayor Baldorman?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, on the reports and communications, first of all, I know for a lot of you, this might be your first exposure to this kind of a board meeting, but it's good. This is the good stuff. We need people that want to develop in this community, and they're not all going to be residential, and they're not all going to be things that we're excited about, but it's good to have that mix. The Cherry Hill Business Park, which again, has been around for twenty-five years, was a great addition to our community. Our Public Works Building is there. You need that type of growth, and we're all concerned about trucks, there's no question, and safety. And I think there are ways that we can hear the concerns of residents, not just on this development, but on all of this, and trying to address all those legitimate concerns, and still move forward with what's best for our town. So whether this gets approved or doesn't get approved, that's not the point. The point is that, as you know, our job, staff's job, is to work through the majority of these issues before they come to us, and they always do a great job with that. Our job is to balance the legitimate concerns and the development, responsible development of our community. And in the eighteen years that I've served as mayor, the majority of the people that I have served with, and the four years as trustee, so the twenty-two years I've sat up here, the majority of the people that I have served with have understood that we don't cave to development, and we don't cave to some people with loud voices. We listen, we compromise, we do what's best for everybody. I'm sure you've all heard that the sign of a good compromise is both sides think they got screwed. I mean, that's the reality of it. And so, great comments by the board tonight, great concerns and questions that were brought up. I thought the developer did an excellent job of presenting, staff of course, did an excellent job of working with them and presenting, and it was nice to see a room full of residents engaged in what's happening in our community. And they were fantastic. They were respectful, they were informed, they had legitimate questions and concerns. This is the process, and is, and I wish, now, of course you don't always want these long board meetings, but I wish people would come to our meetings more often and get a real understanding of how good government works, because this is good government. This is good government. And so, as the mayor, I want to say thank you, of course, to our staff, who always does a phenomenal job, and our legal counsel is always guiding us through these processes. But to serve with, with six board members who ask good questions and understand what the, what the end result is. Sometimes you're going to make decisions that are going to upset some people. That's life. But if you can say, you know, I did everything I could to represent the residents, I did everything I could to represent our business interests, and at the end of the day, I voted in the way that I think is the most responsible, that's all you can do. That's all you can do. And I speak for myself, I don't worry about the next election. I'm going to do what I think is right for the community. And if you lose some votes because you support something, or you pick up some votes, whatever, who cares? At the end of the day, you know, it won't be too long after we're gone that nobody remembers who any of us are anyway. So the only thing you can do, and I just mean like on earth, let alone in these, these positions, all you can do is what's best. And again, as an eighteen-year mayor, I'm pleased to serve with this board and this staff and with our support, so thank you for that. And they did get me off on a tangent, because we have to make some tough choices today, which we did tonight, you know? But unfortunately, we are a community that invests in ourselves. We invest in ourselves. We look at that return on investment, whether it's the sports complex, or whether we're partnering with development, like we did at Route Thirty and Cedar, or over by Cooper's Hawk, or whatever it is. We look at that return on investment, and the money that comes in doesn't all come here. The state of Illinois gets their money from successful communities like us, that don't take, we give. And the little bit that we're supposed to get coming back to us, it's not a gift, it's ours. The income tax, LGDF, that's ours. The motor fuel tax, that's ours. They keep taking away and taking away. And when we talk today about local government distributive fund being at six point seven five percent instead of ten percent where it's supposed to be, and our MFT, even though our population is growing, what we're getting from the state is less, and we made a commitment to our people that we're trying to do seven miles of road every year, so every resident can have a new road every twenty years. We're trying to do the responsible thing. When the government peels away one point seven million dollars a year, I could put Kim on the spot and ask her what percentage of our budget that is, but I mean, when you think of our operating costs and what we do, that sets us back. So when you hear people say, like, tonight to Mark, thank you, you know, our Public Works is second to none, they're right. Our police department's second to none, they're right. Our village hall staff, second to none, they're right. When you're voted the best, best community, best-run village, best all this, there's reasons for that. And we get this in property tax. We get the sales tax, but how do we get the sales tax? Because people want to build here, because people want to live here, and because we as a collective have invested in our community. But we're constantly fighting our own state government to provide the services for our people. And it's wrong, and I don't care, Republican, Democrat, this state has been run so poorly for so many years. It's horrendous, when we are literally ranked number one worst for property taxes, and people get mad at schools. Well, our grade school district is educating fifty-four hundred kids at ten or eleven percent funding coming from the state. And let me tell you, not only do they only give ten or eleven percent instead of fifty percent, every year they're adding more unfunded mandates. You need to do this, you need to do that, you need to do this. We're not going to give you the money to do those things, but you have to hire staff, you have to, you have to buy equipment, you have to do all of these things that the state is telling us we have to do, and they give us less money. So who pays for that? The people who live in their homes. And even though this is a nice community, and most people are doing okay, in the scheme of things in the world, we're doing very well, but a lot of people here are living paycheck to paycheck, like they do everywhere else. So we have choices to make, and sometimes they're tough choices. But I can honestly say, in the years that I have served here, this board and this staff has done the right thing. We've made the tough choices, but because we have, we have clean water from Lake Michigan, we have a new wastewater treatment plant that's not, will take care of our capacity issues, we fix our roads, we plow our streets, we patrol our streets, and we provide all kind of amenities for people here. That's not easy to do when we keep getting our pockets picked. So I, I know it's been a long meeting, but it just really is frustrating to me, but forget them, right now, the people I look at in this room, the people who work for us, and the people who live in this town, that might not like it, like we all live in this town, but you have to pay for water, what you have to pay for sewer, what you have to pay in taxes. But we understand, at least you're getting something for it here. Because like I said, there's all kinds of neighbors to the east that are paying double what we're paying in property taxes, and they're not getting a thing. Taxation stinks, but if you can at least point to what you're getting from it, I think you could say, okay, at least I'm getting something for it. And here in this community, they get something for it. And that's because they have elected people, and we have hired people that are doing the right thing, even if it's not the easy thing. So as the mayor, thank you to all of you, and to our residents again, for their understanding. That's it, that's all I got. There's nothing for me, village attorney?
First of all?
Thank you, village administrator?
Just very quickly, going off what you did, I appreciate what you do and what the board members do, staff, staff, we get, we chose these as our professions, but one of the things, just in this very, this area alone, what this board and previous boards have done, you moved your sanitary plant, you moved it for the whole community, which helped out throughout the whole thing. You've been pushing, Canadian National came to town, and you pushed for funds from them, and that started Phase One, which will now be an overpass eventually, pushed the county to go, go with that overpass, which pushed them to do the widening of Gaugers Road and push them for Lera Way. So there's been a lot of work by this board and previous boards for the benefit of our, of the residents in this area. They had legitimate concerns, nobody wants something, everybody doesn't want something, they want the big open field behind themselves. But in this area, having been here for all these years, I know that this board and previous boards have been fighting for them for a long time.
Forever, thank you, thank you for that. Alright, payroll and disbursements, trustee Mattson?
Yes, sir. I make the motion to approve our bi-monthly disbursements in the amount of three million, nine hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and ten cents. A disbursement in the amount of twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents, and disbursements in the amount of fourteen thousand. In addition to these disbursements, approval is needed for a payroll in the amount of five hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents, paid on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, and that is in the form of a motion.
And I will second that.
Okay, motion's improperly moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Mattson?
Aye.
Trustee Galuza?
Aye.
Trustee Scalise?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Christopherson?
Aye.
Mayor Baldorman?
Aye, motion carries. Anything else, Keith?
No, sir.
Alright, thank you. No one's here left from the floor. Trustee comments, trustee Reiser?
Well, as you mentioned, Mayor, this is the first time that I've been able to attend a meeting like this, and it's part of the reason why I wanted to be up here, and to see the respectful community engagement, you know, bringing their concerns to the board, you know, that's, that's a really neat thing to see, and I'm, I'm happy to be a part of that. But I think the, the really, the, the big thing that I think about is, what we're talking about here, it's all good things. People want to come here, people want to come to our village, whether it be businesses, whether it be residents, these are good, good problems to have and good decisions to have to be making, so I'm just glad to be here, helping out with that.
Glad to have you, thank you. Trustee Mattson?
Those are like the meetings of old, sir.
Yeah, they are. I'd like to tell you I miss them, but I don't.
I just wanted to wish everyone a safe and enjoyable Labor Day weekend.
Appreciate you, thank you. Trustee Christopherson?
I'm going to echo what we've been saying about the great community we live in, northern builders are a solid business to have, and, you know, that they're looking for this space. I know their comment about the nice buffer building went over like a lead balloon, but you could tell they were thinking about all the details, and they were really trying to consider the residents. So we're thankful to them, and just the residents being here with their concerns, very valid and great to hear from them, so that's all I have for today.
Absolutely, and I will say, they've been here twenty-five years, and if you look at their business park, it doesn't look like twenty-five years later. I mean, they keep up on their properties and what they do, they do a nice job. Because that is always a concern, yeah, it looks good today, what's it going to look like a quarter century from now? But the proof is in the pudding, so, alright, thank you. Trustee Galuza?
Yeah, this, this was a first for me as well, and I, I loved it, I loved to see it. What was really exciting for me is you had young people, and you had older people, and you had newer residents, and you had longtime residents, and it was just nice to see so many people care enough to come out and get involved. I do want to clarify, the point that I was trying to make was, you know, I listened to a lot of the board and the staff comments, and the residents' comments, and it's, it's going to be a tough decision, there's a lot for me to think about as, as a board member. But to your point, you know, the people that wanted industrial or don't want industrial, do or don't want apartments, and so I, I wanted to raise the question of, okay, let's do what you all say, let's make it a pool, a dog park, but now we have to raise your taxes.